Meeting of the Pennington County Commission to Order. Just want to welcome everybody here. Ask that you quiet your cell phones or electronic devices. For those that wish to appear before and speak to us, there's speaker request forms in the back of the room. Just fill those out for the item that you would like to speak to, and you can deliver them to Holly Hinnies or manager sitting up here on your right. So I'll call on Commissioner Ross Connect to lead us in a moment of silent reflection and our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. Next item is to review and approve the agenda. We got a motion by Commissioner Hadcock, and a second by Commissioner Glasser. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar. Holly Hinnies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of February 26, 2021; Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 2, 2021; Number seven is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Ms. Jermaine Littlebear to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission; Number eight is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle by the Rochford Community Hall; Number nine is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Rochford Chapel; Number ten is to schedule a special meeting on Friday, May 7, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. for a budget work session; Number eleven is to declare one NICE call focus two recording system, one NICE log recording system, asset number 5917, one Freedom Recording Asset System, asset number 5145, 5146, 5493, one Kenward UHF repeater, asset number 4697, and one Gateway ALR 7200 server asset, 5277 is surplus for the purpose of disposal or dignation, which is submitted by the Emergency Services Communication Center; Number twelve is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of February 2021 for human resources and the fire administration; and finally, number thirteen is approval of the request for authorization to reapply for the VOKA and the STOP-VA grants from the State's Attorney's Office and Victims Assistance.
Are there any members of the public that wish to have any items from the consent calendar removed from that calendar? Is there any members of the commission that wish they have any items removed? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lester, a second from Commissioner La Croix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item fourteen, items from emergency management. Dustin Willett.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management. So on almost all the metrics that we glance at and look at and track with COVID-19 as it moves through our community, everything looks really positive. I mean, all of our numbers are trending the direction that we'd want them to trend. We're sitting at about 169 active cases in the county. We haven't been that low since before our bump last August. So the numbers continue to trend down. To support that, the CDC ensemble model shows that continuing to be a downward trend, at least through the end of April, which is about as far out as that model's willing to predict. So right now, all the models that we have continue to predict a downward trend, which is a very good thing. Our vaccination efforts continue to be really good. South Dakota still ranks in the top three states for its vaccination program. In Pennington County, we're sitting just under about 23,000 of our residents vaccinated. And the really big win in vaccination are the groups of people that we have vaccinated. You know, we've got our long-term care folks vaccinated, our health care workers vaccinated, we're starting to vaccinate our teachers. Those groups that we're really concerned about and high-risk in our community, we're getting the vaccine out to those folks that want them. And that's a pretty big win for our community. So as numbers of vaccines continue to be made available, those requirements continue to drop. So right now, you know, you're down to one medical condition if you're if any member of the public wants to know if they qualify for that one medical position. The Department of Health's website has a whole laundry list of what those medical conditions are that will qualify you to be eligible to receive the vaccine right now. When you look at their projected dates, you know, the lowest level is, you know, everybody 16 and above that wants a vaccine, come get the vaccine. Right now in South Dakota, that timeline is predicted somewhere around May. So looking at sometime in May, the ability for maybe anybody that wants the vaccine to be able to sign up to receive the vaccine. So again, nationally, some of the numbers are significant number of vaccines and people that want the vaccine taking place and being up in that 90% range by August. So those dates, those numbers, when we're going to see a majority of people who want the vaccine able to access the vaccine, that number continues to improve as well. So again, most of the things that we look at are cause for, again, it's a, everything's moving in the right direction. The one thing that you see in the media are a lot of headlines about variants. So, you know, there's the UK variant, the South Africa variant, Brazil variant. Each one of those variants has different numbers of structural changes to the actual virus. The UK variant actually has the least number of structural changes, and then the South Africa, and then the Brazil follow with greater numbers of actual structural changes to the virus. The greater the number of structural changes, the greater the chance is that the vaccines we've developed will be less effective. However, right now, all of the vaccines that we have approved in the United States under emergency use are doing just fine against the variants. The concern is, there is some data that would indicate that the UK variant is more transmissible, that it infects people quicker and more readily. So the concern is that it would spread faster than we can keep up with the vaccine. I read a headline, I haven't had a chance to vet it or look at the information behind it, but I read some information, I think just this morning, that said that that UK variant is positioned to become the, actually, the dominant strain in the United States here relatively quickly. We've seen two or three cases of the UK variant in South Dakota, all in Minnehaha County. But other than that, other than that being kind of in the latest news cycle and people paying attention to it, again, all of our numbers look good. The other piece of encouraging news was Pennington County dropped from substantial community spread down to moderate community spread. So again, moderate community spread, as defined by the Department of Health here in South Dakota, is 10 to 100 cases per 100,000 people. So I think yesterday, we had two, an increase of two positive cases. So not an increase, but we only had two positive cases tested in Pennington County yesterday. So those are all, those are all good news. The influenza numbers that people ask about continue to be incredibly low. So the week nine of our influenza season just ended, and after the end of week nine, we've had 63 positive influenza A and B cases in South Dakota with two deaths. Just by way of comparison, the last flu season, we had just under 10,000 cases, 9,555, and 43 deaths. So again, the influenza numbers are just almost nonexistent in South Dakota. And that trend actually exists nationwide. Influenza numbers are way, way down. So that's just a really quick, brief overview of some of the numbers and data points that we look at and track. Be happy to stand for any questions the commission may have.
Commission, do you have any questions, Dustin?
I do.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Thank you, Chair. So on the variants, isn't any virus going to have variants?
Viruses mutate. That's what they do. Every virus mutates. And it was expected and known, and yes, every virus mutates. And there's probably dozens and dozens of variants out there. It's a matter of which ones emerge and tend to cause concern.
Yeah, because I was listening to the NBC nightly news or something that about New York and how they have a different strain, and New York might have a, you know, different variant that might be coming that's not to do with UK, Brazilian, or anything else.
Absolutely.
And bottom line is, even in influenza or any virus that we have, you have a lot of variants. So people that are listening to that, a lot of time are freaking out in a sense that, you know, again, we knew there was going to be strains and different strains and different strains coming forward. So I don't know much about the shot. I haven't got the shot yet. So some people are taking it, some people aren't, some people are not only taking one at this point. And do you know if that's helping, or if it's hurting, or if it's, there's no kind of data on it right now?
The effort of vaccinations?
Right.
Everything that we would have would say that it's helping. That's probably the biggest, one of the biggest eggs in our basket in terms of keeping or getting a handle of, on COVID across the country and anywhere. So the more, the more people we have vaccinated, the more antibodies for COVID-19 people have floating around in their blood, the better off we're going to be as a population. So it's a good thing.
And not to be skeptic, but on influenza, are they calling it COVID? Are they calling it? I'm finding that a lot of people, even with bronchitis, they're not testing as much at the doctor's office. They're, what I've seen is they're just saying, okay, your wife has it, you have it. And then they're calling maybe COVID or influenza part of COVID. So I think a lot of things that I've seen so far have been skewed, not to be too skeptic, because I do believe that COVID is serious. I just see a lot of different variances in how we're calling something COVID when it's, people get money for it. I'm going to be up straight. They get money when they call it COVID. They make more money off of it being called COVID instead of influenza. So to me, I'm going to be a skeptic in a certain extent, because what I've seen, what I've heard, and even with deaths where people are asked, you get more money if you call it COVID. You can get your funeral for your husband, your grandfather paid for if you call it COVID instead of natural deaths or old age, stuff like that. So that's not just happened once. That's happened a lot since I've been, and I do work in a beauty shop as well. So unfortunately, it's hard not to be a skeptic when you're listening to how much money people get off a virus instead of being up straight. So.
Further questions, Dustin? No, thank you, Dustin. Appreciate the update. Next item is number fifteen. Call on Auditor Cindy Moller. We do have Tom Grimmon of Colliers International on the phone.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. Yes, Tom is going to actually explain the refinancing that we'd like to do with the 2017 A-bonds. When we first started looking at these numbers back in February, before we could actually get him on the agenda, we were looking at saving about 1.3 million. That's dropped down as interest rates are starting to go up. So he'll kind of explain that.
Okay. I'd just point out that Tom is by telephone. He did plan on being here in person. He's in Sioux Falls, and because of roads and road conditions, he chose to do, or he's actually on Zoom. He's not on the telephone. Good to see you, Tom. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for having me. So let me start with, I'm going to try and share my screen here. All right. So I'm not sure where that appears for you guys, but can you see the graph there?
We can.
Fantastic. So this is the, it's my graph. I take the, I take the data points and create the graph, but the data points are from the bond buyer, which is kind of like our Wall Street Journal, the municipal magazine or newspaper that comes out daily. And they, they've been tracking what they call the 20-bond GO Index since the beginning of the last century. And I've got it all the way back to 1965. So you can kind of see how, you know, how the interest rates have moved for this 20-year A-rated type bonds over the last, you know, almost 60 years in this graph. You can see where we've kind of bottomed out towards the bottom of the graph, where we're at right now. So it's easier to see. I had a second page here, kind of broke it out back to when the recession, the Great Recession started back in '07 to where we are currently. You can see that in 2020, we hit a 60-year low in interest rates, and since then, we've been kind of up, and it's been bouncing around. And right now, rates are heading back up again. And as Cindy mentioned, you know, initially, when I ran numbers back in February, you know, we were looking at about $1,003,000 in total savings. And then I provided some additional numbers the other day, and that's actually decreased because of this little blip you see down here, this interest rate down here that's, you know, bounced up a little bit. So that's, you know, that's changed. I'll go to my other numbers here. So how do we do this analysis? Basically, over the 20-some years that I've been doing this, to almost 29 years that I've been doing this, I always get, well, what's the savings going to be? So many years ago, I decided to change how I present the numbers. Instead of building to the savings, I just put the savings right up front. And it's really, really, there's no hard complicated math on this. Basically, we take the existing old debt service. That's already, you're already committed to this debt service where it says old net debt service. And then we do the new bonds, which is the column that says total PNI. And then we're not refinancing or asking to refinance the non-callable bonds. So you still have those bonds that would be outstanding, and that's the existing debt service. We add those two together. So you end up with what they call the new, the net new debt service, DS. And then we compare that to the old net debt service, and you can see where the savings are. There's not a lot of savings. The way I've done this schedule is I've done a, what they call an accelerated solve, where the savings is taken at the end. So the bond issue is paid off a little sooner, and the savings is taken more at the end. We can do this where there's what they call uniform savings or equal savings, where each year, there's equal savings. But usually, you know, usually we see on tax deals, we just leave the levy the same because, you know, saving $60,000 a year doesn't really impact the levy all that much. And then paying it off early seems to be more important on tax deals. But we can structure this any way you want. You know, early savings, you know, you can take savings in the middle, savings at the end, savings up front. But normally, this is kind of how we see savings taken in a tax deal, is to just try and pay the deal off earlier. You can see here that savings, what Cindy mentioned again, that the savings, we started off with savings of 1.3 million. Just in that interest rate movements in the last month and a half, almost two months now, you can see that it's down to $970,000, $968,000. So it has decreased substantially. But, you know, that's the nature of the market, and you get what the interest rates are in the market at that time. And this is where we're projecting where interest rates are now. And we saw the interest rates starting to bump up, and, you know, we've kind of, you know, brought it as quickly as we can. But this is, this is where it's at now. What's, what's key, and why I guess really didn't pull it from the agenda, is you're still, you know, even though it'd be great to save 1.3 million, I wish I could do that. I have no control over the interest rate market. But one reason why we still have it on the agenda, or I'm still, you know, talking about it, is that the present value number, that the other yellow highlighted area there is 4.3%. The industry, the industry standard, I mean, there's some states where it's actually written in law where you have to have 3% present value savings. So if you take the 3% as kind of the threshold number, we're still above that by 1.3% here. So it still seemed to make sense, you know, you're almost $1 million in savings, so just, you know, go ahead and bring it to the commission and let you guys make that decision. You know, kind of thinking back to the graph, I glossed over it a little bit. We're at historic lows. If interest rates are climbing now to where they would be historically, we've still got, you know, 60 or 70 basis points to move yet to get back to where I would consider historic interest rates. So, I mean, you know, we were just in this low period, you know, through the COVID and through threat of, threat of a recession. If we come out of this and there's no recession, and all the money that they're pumping into the system keeps us from going in the recession, interest rates are probably going to continue to climb. So we're not going to see interest rates any better than they are now. Could they improve again? Could they bounce back down and even go lower? Yep, that could happen. I thought we'd never go lower than we did, you know, previously. And let me bounce back to that. You know, I thought we hit the bottom of the market right here, back in 19, at the end of 19. I didn't think we'd ever go any lower than that. And then here we are. We went through COVID where there were spikes and everything like that, and then we hit this bottom back in, back in September of last year. So, and we haven't seen where we've come back and hit the bottom again. So if you know, if you, if you're a technician at all, you can see resistance levels. We have a resistance level here. So if it does improve, but we're on an upward trend, we probably won't be any better than where we were at there. So the key here is, I think, is to at least start the process. If interest rates go away completely, and your savings disappears, the way this is set here, and I should mention that this savings is net of all costs, you know, as we move down this road, if, if interest rates continue to climb, and they jump up another 60 basis points, and your savings are basically wiped out and not worthwhile doing this, there's no cost to the county. But there is lead time. And by acting on a resolution now, whether or not, you know, we get to that point of actually selling the certificates of participation, you know, now, now we can start the process. We can't start the process until there's action. I hope that makes sense. So there's a little bit of lead time there, and this way, we can get over that hump. And if interest rates continue to climb, then, you know, the county's not out any money. There's no cost until we get to the rating part of it, and by then, we'll know for sure whether that's going to be any savings. Or, you know, maybe interest rates improve a little bit after we get over this hump. Maybe it is just a hump. I mean, the Treasury Secretary says there is an inflation out there, and maybe as we work through COVID, you know, interest rates might rebound a little bit. But I'm not predicting that. I think the trend upward is back to kind of a normalization. So anyway, I think I'd end it there. I can go through all the numbers in detail, but that'd take all morning. I'll just leave it at this. And if anyone has any specific questions they'd like to ask, please do.
Tom, just a quick question. First of all, I'm certainly in favor of starting the process, especially under the circumstances where we could stop it at any point in time, too. But when you talk about lead time, how much lead time are you talking about? Is that an average of a couple of weeks, or?
Right. So lead time, I mean, as some of you know, especially the, anyone who's rotated, rotated through a bond issue as county, county chair, you know, we have to put together the documents, like the trust, the trust agreement. We have drafts of that right now. The other one that we need is the, is the, is the offering document, that what they call the official statement. And we put together a preliminary official statement, and we take the county information, and we update, you know, the last deal that we did, you know, with the current deal. And that usually takes, you know, three to four weeks just to get that done. And then the rating will take two to three weeks to get the rating back. So you're looking at, you know, six to seven weeks before we can actually lock the interest rates in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make the motion to approve the resolution to refinance the county bonds.
I've got a motion from Commissioner La Croix to approve the resolution to refinance the bonds. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ross Connect. Further discussion. Cindy, any comments that you had regarding that? Okay. No discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Tom, thank you very much for bringing this to us, and we always appreciate having the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and we'll get to work, and we'll report back to you when we get to that point, I guess, and see where we're at. Hopefully, rates have stayed the same or gotten a little better even.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item, 16, Public Defender Advisory Committee Appointment. Mr. Eric Bringswhite. Mr. Bringswhite, come on forward. Please introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit of your interest in serving on this.
My name's Eric Bringswhite. My interests are, I guess, twofold. I want to assist our system in addressing some of the barriers in some of the work that they're doing with, with some of the vulnerable populations here in Rapid City. Also, I want the community to benefit from this kind of work. So I already work to, I work with vulnerable populations here in Pennington County. We work to become well, healthy, and on the road to healing so we can participate in the meaningful conversations and the meaningful work that's being done. So it'll be self-sustaining. It'll be just a lifestyle change in the community.
Well, Eric, we appreciate you stepping forward and being, having an interest in this. I'm going to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions of you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
I move to appoint Mr. Eric Bringswhite to the Public Defender Advisory Committee for a term of three years.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second.
I got a comment.
Commissioner La Croix.
I have a follow-up after. Mr. La Croix, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to, well, thanks, Deb, for making the motion, but I wanted to give a little history on Eric. I've worked with Eric on the Community Advisory Committee. I think that's where we first met. And after Deb's done, Eric, I'd like you to give a little talk on I Am Legacy, that you do up in the mall, what you have, and what you do for our community. He's been really active in our community with the vulnerable people and past incarceration and so forth. And he's been, I would say, a mentor to many, to many. And I think to have him on the Public Defender's Advisory Board is going to benefit that board dramatically with his knowledge. And so I was part of the interviewing process, and I'd just say Eric stands out in our community as a leader and mentor. And I think I really appreciate you stepping up and doing that.
Commissioner Hadcock.
I just appreciate Mr. Bringswhite. Number one, we need more of the native population and leaders in our community stepping up for these boards and for committees, so we see the other side, the perspective of all people. And you're part of that. And helping out the community and what you do as a mentor, sir, is huge for our community. Hopefully in the future, we'll have more and more of the Native American population. We do have the Pennington County Housing Authority as well. We have a lady that has stepped up to help us in that. She has a lot of knowledge and information that, as well, kind of like you're doing, sir. We can't move forward in our community if we don't have people like you, sir, to make that difference. So we appreciate you a lot, sir.
Thank you.
Eric, do you have some more comments you'd like to make? Commissioner La Croix asked you to share with us.
Absolutely. So we founded, my wife and I founded I Am Legacy two years ago, yesterday. We were in the Rushmore Mall, up towards the Old Target there, between the knife works and the at-home store. We have support groups. Every day, we do NA or ARV- Uh, we do NA or our version of NA. It's not anonymous because we celebrate people's recovery at Legacy. Um, but we have AA, NA, every evening, six to eight. Um, yesterday, if, if we were open, it would have been Medicinal Monday. It's, it's for females only, exclusive to females. Um, today is our Honorable Young Men, it's our eighteen and under demographic. A lot of them are referred from the State's Attorney's Office. So they're navigating through some difficulties in their lives and, and we just work with them to get them, uh, accept some of the things that, you know, has happened to them and, and just work to be in good, healthy Rapid Cityans. Um, Wednesdays, we have Warrior Wednesdays. It's mostly females again. Uh, I've, I've observed some, some strange things in the, in the time that we've been working. Um, the non-native males, um, are empowered and, and ready to do this, you know? And it's the non-native females who are needing that empowerment. But with the Native American demographic, um, it's, it's, it's opposite. It's the Native American females who are empowered and the Native American males who need empowering. That's all right. So that's just a little glimpse of, of what our week looks like. Fridays is, um, Female Fridays. Our females are, uh, a little more progressive than our males are in, in, at Legacy. Um, but anybody's welcome to attend. This isn't ethnicity-based. It's a reflective of Rapid City. Uh, you got, you know, what are, one of our biggest hopes is if you come in, maybe you have a question, you know, about these demographics or this side of town or that side of town. And that question leads to a conversation. And we both get some understanding out of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair. So Eric, you know, all the sight out of mine, there's a lot of stuff that's going on in Rapid City that we don't see, you know? And, uh, I, I appreciate you being in the trenches and doing the stuff that you do. And feel free to come back in a year and keep us up to date on the good work that you're doing.
Absolutely, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of, uh, appointing Mr. Eric Brings White to Public Defender Advisory Committee? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next item is, uh, item number seventeen, uh, resolution to declare Pennington County, South Dakota Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Uh, Commissioner Lassiter?
Yes, sir. You'd like me to speak on this one?
Yes.
All right. Well, this was brought to me by some citizens and I brought it forward to the Board of Commissioners a couple of weeks ago, three, three, four weeks ago, when it was brought to my attention. And it's something that I asked for, uh, consideration and it looks like the County Commission is interested in it, at least putting it on the, uh, agenda for discussion. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would say that I'm in supportive of the, um, resolution in its current form. And open any questions or conversations about that?
Okay, I do have two, uh, speaker request forms relative to this and I would call on Lawrence Thompson first. Okay, changes the order. Tanci Weaver first.
Dang, we're going to have a, a fast one. Just teasing you, Tanci.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry to mess up your order here. Um, I thank you for bringing this. Uh, I was here last time, as you know, and, um, requested that something be, uh, put forward. I have read it. In the meantime, I have read a few other things. And, um, I, um, I realize that all of us have the same goal here and it's to put forth the best product for the most protection possible. In the meantime, between last meeting and this meeting, there has been another county that has approved a Second Amendment, um, county, uh, Second Amendment Sanctuary County status. And that's Fall River. I have their resolution here. And, um, it adds something that, of course, Bennett didn't and that, um, your proposal does not have either. And that is, uh, a little clarity. And I'm just going to read what Fall River has added. Further be it resolved that no employee or official of Fall River County may assist federal employees, agents, or officials in the enforcement of executive orders in violation of the above referenced constitutional provisions. And that motion, um, was adopted and, um, it passed unanimously. I, in, in light of that, a local attorney drafted some proposals that you might want to consider. I brought copies, can I distribute them?
Sure.
I'm sorry, looking at the wrong person, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Okay, and, and this just goes a little farther and it was, um, written, um, as though it were your resolution. It's just an, kind of an add-on. Um, I'm glad that you acknowledged in your resolution, uh, the concurrent resolution that was passed in, um, in the State House, Senate Concurrent Resolution 607, because it's important, I think, to acknowledge that our state also feels this way. But I would, um, appreciate it very much if you would consider adding some or all of those suggestions to your proposed resolution because while it's not actually a penalty clause, it does describe what we will or will not do. So with that, I will, um, I will leave that to your consideration and I'll be here if you want to ask me any questions about it.
Okay, thank you, Tanci.
Thank you.
Jay.
Florence, would you like to come forward? And Jay, I will be coming to you also.
Thank you. My name is Florence Thompson, I'm from Caputa. I'm just speaking for myself. Um, as a woman, I really appreciate being able to have the security of having a firearm. And, uh, God made men and women, but Sam Colt made them equal. And so that's my philosophy. And I think back to, uh, when the Katrina hurricane happened. Uh, one of the things they did in New Orleans when society started to break down and, and there was the general chaos and, and a lot of crime going on, was they confiscated guns from the law-abiding citizens, which is exactly the wrong thing to do. That, those are the people that are basically the backup for your law enforcement officers. So I just, uh, hope that you will take a real serious look at this, knowing that an armed and ethical and, um, well-trained citizen is an asset to public security and public safety. And that we, we work with, with the police, we work with the law enforcement. And we, we know that they can't be everywhere, especially in South Dakota. I know how thinly, my son's a, a law enforcement officer. I know how thin spread they are a lot of times. So, uh, when a cop is, you know, just minutes away, you, seconds count. You know, you need to be able to defend yourself in your home. So, thank you so much for considering this and, and we hope that you'll join these other counties in, in passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence. I will, uh, I will point out that, uh, when Commissioner Lassiter presented this a couple of weeks ago, uh, we did provide a copy of the one that was, uh, adopted by Bennett County, uh, to our State's Attorney's Office. And I believe that we also, uh, when we obtained a copy of the one from Fall River County, that was, uh, a little different, I think we also provided that to the State's Attorney's Office. Uh, State's Attorney's Office did come back with what they recommend, uh, that if we're interested in adopting, uh, and that's what we have before us today. And I would ask Jay Alderman to come forward and, uh, speak relative to, I know that some of this language may be a little bit different or new to you, but speak to as to, uh, why you felt that, uh, we were in better shape, um, you know, looking at the resolution that we have before us.
Right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Um, I'm not going to try to presume where, of course, everyone stands on this issue. Probably most people in the audience today are in favor of this resolution. My only, uh, thought process on adding that additional language directing officials, officers, elected, uh, officials of departments or offices in the county, um, to prohibit or forbid them from cooperating with federal, uh, law enforcement officers or otherwise, uh, certainly raises the prospect of infringing or impeding their, uh, official duties in their office. And so it may well be wise to call upon those folks. That might be the State's Attorney, that might be the Sheriff, Pennington County, uh, and others that I'm not thinking of perhaps right now, to get their take on exactly where they would stand, uh, with the commission, uh, frankly directing that they can or cannot do something in their official capacity. I'm not saying that because I'm for or against, I'm just simply pointing out that that does raise, uh, that prospect. Uh, it, let me ask, uh, if, you know, has the legislature in fact passed that resolution?
As, as of the agenda, both, both houses, the House and the Senate had passed it. It was waiting for final signature.
So that also sets up the idea, I presume, that, uh, at a state level, uh, certainly they will be watching anything, uh, happening in Congress or in the executive office uh, with regard to this issue. And I would assume, uh, could well be our state and any number of states joining forces to challenge, uh, anything that may come out of Washington in this regard. So that's also another checks and balances that, uh, uh, we should be aware of. And if you pass this resolution, I would assume support, uh, wholeheartedly our, our county and our state, uh, uh, doing that. So I don't know if I've answered entirely your question, but I just think that adding that additional language, um, it would be reasonable to call upon officials that that would probably be directed to, to get their take on it.
Sure, thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Bring it back to Commissioner Lassiter.
Sir, yes, sir, is there anybody else? No one else?
Uh, no, no other speaker?
All right. Well, currently I have no problem with it in its current form. I haven't had a chance to review all language and particularly ask how it may impact the changing of it. And I would make a motion to approve the resolution to declare Pennington County, South Dakota, a Second Amendment Sanctuary County.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair.
For the discussion. Commissioner Ross Connect?
Uh, I just have, uh, I'm just reading this, I just got this here a few minutes ago. Jay, could you come up to the podium a minute? So if I read this right, it's saying they don't want to use taxpayers' funds or towards unconstitutional. So we wouldn't want to do that, right? We wouldn't want to use taxpayers' monies for some, something that would be, we would deem unconstitutional, would we? Am I reading it right?
Well, that's a bit of a loaded question, uh, because, uh, certainly we can declare in our personal opinions, anything unconstitutional. In this particular case, this will be an issue that may well be hotly contested in the courts and so forth. So, um, I don't, I don't know that you are in a position, Commissioner, as yourself, as this body.
I was just, just wanted to make sure I understood.
Go down that road. Um, frankly, I view the resolution as more of a statement of Pennington County. Um, I couldn't tell you as I stand here that it is binding authority on anyone in this county. It's a statement that you as a body strongly support the Second Amendment and feel that there are activities or rumors or actions that may well be taken at the federal level that you feel would infringe upon, uh, the Second Amendment. Um, so this is a statement saying you don't like it, you don't want that to happen and that you'll, uh, probably support or take whatever action necessary, in particular to support our state to challenge any such activity or action. But at this level, um, I think, at least for the time being, this is a statement and it's not a binding authority, uh, if you understand what I'm saying, I guess, with regard to that.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect? I think if you, if you look at the resolution that we have before us and the one that the motion is on, that language is, is different than what was presented to us.
Right.
Um, Commissioner LaCroy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, I, I, I think I'm in supportive of this resolution because it is more of a statement in, you know, the stuff that's come forward afterwards. Uh, and I think you've entered this resolution and looked through it and I think it's a fair one for us. I, I don't, I don't want to bind future commissions to something that, uh, I think every event is different and each board should take things up differently at that, those times. But I think this is a guiding document to help them and guiding document to help our, our legislators and our state, I think. So I'm in support of the resolution as far.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lassiter?
I'd also like to point out, I kind of like what Jay had to say about any other elected officials. You know, it would be prudent or even if the citizens wanted to hear from the other elected officials, that could be in, in a role, um, dealing with this particular issue, to get those individuals to make a statement or their office or whatnot because that would also show their support as well.
Right.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock?
It also states in, in almost the bottom of the page that, um, we also firmly opposes any effort of, by the current administration to require the registration, confiscation, or mandate sale of firearms and any other, any other unconstitutional restriction on individual right to bear arms. And if that probably wasn't in there, it, I'd say something different. But I think a lot of this covers what we're saying here anyway. And if we're putting this forward, I think, uh, I appreciate the, uh, extra, um, be it further resolved. But I think this says that and we are saying a statement by that, by what we are putting forth by Pennington County today. So I think, uh, this is a good step forward, uh, for Pennington County.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter, second by Commissioner Adcock to adopt the resolution. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. You all.
Thank you all for, uh, for coming. Joe Miller, Highway Superintendent, item eighteen.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Uh, item eighteen is, uh, again, the agreement for Hawthorne Ditch facilities. Um, this is an agreement between, uh, county and the contractor to clean the facilities to allow water to flow through, free, excuse me, freely through the inverted siphons and trash racks, um, that basically were put in for our infrastructure. Little history Hawthorne Ditch facility dates back to eighteen eighty-six. Um, the original agreement was for Pennington County to, uh, guarantee twenty-one cubic feet per second. Um, yeah, most of our drainage in the valley drains into one of three, uh, drainages, unnamed tributary, the race track draw and Hawthorne Ditch. Hawthorne Ditch being the one that, um, I guess there's actually four. Murphy Ditch also is in there somewhere. Um, contract's in the amount of $4,000, it's paid twice per year. Um, the, the rats usually need to be cleaned once, once or twice per week, especially in the spring and the fall. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, uh?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock?
I want to authorize the Highway Department to enter in and sign an agreement with Wyatt Clappridge for the maintenance of Hawthorne Ditch, inverted siphons and trash racks for 2021.
Second.
Got a motion and a, and a second from Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, any further comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Chair. I'd just like to say, if you see these signatures, I found two worse than mine.
Yeah.
If you want to read this, there's more scribbled on this than anybody's ever seen. Sorry, I had to say that. Holly's always commenting how bad my signature is.
And, uh, Commissioner Adcock, I, I appreciate the fact that you jumped right on that, uh, A item under highway, uh, since I'm requiring the, the full motion to be read because the next two are going to be. Go ahead, go ahead, item B.
Item B is our annual bid award recommendations and all.
Item B is our annual bid award recommendations, and I got some picked out here that we'll just go through, and I'll kind of give you the numbers from last year and the numbers from this year, and then kind of our engineer's estimate, what, where they came in at compared to our estimates.
And Joe, if you could read the motion, then we could say so moved. That'd be easier.
I didn't have the motion in my packet here, I'd have to go get that in my notes anyways. Asphalt surface crack sealing, we received three bids. The lowest bid was Aztep Corporation in the amount of one eighty-four, five twenty. It's approximately one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars lower than our engineers' estimate. Now, keep in mind that can run amok, depending on if they get out there and there's more cracks in the roads than what we've found or what we've seen. So it's good that that one came in under. Asphalt surface treatment, which is our chip seal project, two, two bids were received. We recommend awarding this to Simon Contractors for seven thirty-nine, six oh two fifty. This is for approximately thirty-three mile, thirty-three point two miles of road that we're chip sealing. This bid came in about one hundred and eighteen thousand, one thirty-four lower than our engineers' estimate. Gravel haul in place in the wall area. We received two bids, one from Western Construction, one from Roth Constru-, I don't know if it's construction or haulers, I guess. With, we recommend awarding alternative C with water, which is, which gets all those roads up in that neck of the woods. Travis and I traveled those couple, three weeks ago now. You know, get all those roads caught back up under our eight-year cycle, they're, I believe about a year behind right now. It's been about eight years since we've bid this type of project, so we didn't have a real good estimate as to what it was going to cost, so we feel that that half million dollars is a, is a good number, so. Next one is bridge repair for Old Hill City Road. This one was found during our annual inspections. Our KLJ recommended putting a weight restriction on this bridge, which makes it difficult for snow removal for our Hill City crew, because they've got to go all the way out and around, so that's why this one kind of got pushed to the top of the list this year. Two bids were received, we recommend awarding this to J.B. Bailey in the amount of one twenty-five nine fifty. Came in approximately twenty-five thousand dollars under our engineers' estimate. The cost for the double Ts on this bridge are thirty-five thousand, nine one, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Total cost for the project is one hundred and sixty-one, eight, sixty-eight forty. Currently, we're actually looking at as an alternative to double T structures, which is a, it's a tub girder structure. We're looking at the feasibility and, and the cost as far as how it compares to the double Ts. It's just one more avenue for local governments to, to try and get some of these bridges back up to regular loads. The tub girders, their, their main thing will, it'll keep a sealed deck unit, so it'll keep that waddle from running down the side of the deck units. The water and the salt deteriorate the, the double Ts, so. In the next several years, we're going to experience a shortage of contractors and, and whatnot to try and get all these bridges replaced. The state is doing a, a ton work. They're putting out some grants, some federal grants, and there's just a lot of bridges in the state of South Dakota that need repairs, so. You know, in western South Dakota, I think there's probably four contractors, so it's a lot of work for just four contractors. Next up is our bridge repair on High Seeger Road. We received two bids, two bids on this one, we recommend awarding to J.B. Bailey also in the amount of one twenty-seven eight, seven eighty-one, approximately two, thirty thousand dollars under our engineers' estimate. Cost for the double Ts on this project were thirty thousand, three ninety-four. Total cost for this bridge will be one hundred and fifty-one, one seventy-five. The next one on your list would be Nemo Road Bridge Repairs. This is to repair the deck units that were not replaced last year. Due to the asphalt being overlaid on these concrete decks, it traps the water and the salt underneath between the, the asphalt and the, the concrete, and it begins the deterioration of that concrete. So once you pull that asphalt off, the, the concrete just kind of flakes away, so this is a project to try and fix that. We are looking into different sorts of options to, I'm sure, I don't know if, I think Ron's or Commissioner Ross Connect's got some complaints on those bridges. I know we have, just to, due to their roughness, after taking that, that asphalt off there, they don't ride as smooth, because it is a triple span, double T, and there's humps in them. So we're looking at different options to try and keep the water out and, and be able to do an overlay on that to, to smooth them up, so. I'll stop there with our construction projects. Are there any questions on those?
Any questions on those?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Recommend twenty twenty-one annual bid award recommendations as read by Highway Superintendent Joe Miller.
Second. Got a motion and a second.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Jerry, you got it all?
I got it all.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
All right, are we on to, scroll back up here, bid awards? On to the professional service agreements? Or do you want to go to the supplies?
Professional service agreements.
Okay. Professional service agreement, this is for the design of the Sherman Street Bridge up in Silver City. I know the fire chief up there will be excited to see this. This is an agreement to do the design engineering on Sherman Street Bridge so that we can apply for big funds in twenty twenty-two to get this bridge replaced in order to have bid-ready plans, as we learned this year. It gets very tight even, even starting the design process here to get all your, starting your design process now, to get all your permits and everything in place by the time that this is ready to, to go to the, the Transportation Committee for recommendations, so. The bridge is on a five-year plan, and is needed to replace for, for several years, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Move to approve professional services agreement, two one oh three, zero zero three one two with K.L.J. Engineering LLC in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred for the preliminary engineering for the replacement of VR five two dash two four six dash two nine eight on Sherman Street in Hill City South, excuse me, in Silver City, South Dakota.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next up is, it's that time of year to select a.
We just did it all on one.
It's that time of year to select a engineering service to do our bridge inspections. KLJ has done them for the last two years, so they've now seen all of our bridges, we're very pleased with their work. You know, when our bridge collapsed last year on, on Nemo Road, and even when we found a hole in one of them, they were, they were out there to inspect it within a couple hours and, and tell us what their recommendation was and get that over to the state, so. They're currently doing the, the design, or they did do the design for Thunderhead Falls Bridges, so that's, we've selected them for, to do the Sherman Street Bridge also. Usually, we spend about ten thousand dollars a year on bridge inspections. Comes down to about two hundred and fifty-seven dollars per bridge, our cost. With this resolution, the state pitches in quite a bit, so. Twenty nineteen, we spent fifteen thousand, six seventy-one. Twenty eighteen, we spent nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars, and we have not yet got the final invoice for twenty twenty, so we don't know what that's going to come in at. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LaCroy.
I'd move to approve the bridge inspection program, twenty twenty-one dash oh three dash sixteen dash one, requesting South Dakota DOT to hire K.L.G. to perform the Pennington County's twenty twenty-one bridge inspections.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Item E, Sheridan Lake Road Construction Change Order. So this change order comes to you, I'll go through a little bit. The change order one was base course testing, the state approved that one with our concurrence. The change order number two was round, the concrete pipe, we allowed them to bend it around the curve and paint. Phase, or excuse me, change order three was painting out of phase work, just allowing them to work in phase one. Change order four and five were just design plan changes essentially. So here in front of you is change order six. Oftal is requesting an additional six weeks of contract time, or thirty-six days, and an additional one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars to cover some of their overhead cost. If you've read through the packet there, Oftal originally came out a, came with a number of, let me get to it here. If I can find it.
Two hundred and something like that.
Was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars was their original ask, and eight weeks of time. After a couple, two, probably three or four meetings, actually, we did get that negotiated down to what we feel is a reasonable number, which is that one fifty-three and change, and then six weeks of additional contract time. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair. I think that was a good compromise, so I'll move to approve construction change order number six for the Sheridan Lake Road Reconstruction Project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three fifty-six, and contract extension of thirty-six working days.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. From, I got a motion from Ross Connect, a second from Commissioner LaCroy. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
So, Joe, these, they were put behind because utilities companies fell behind. We have no control over utility companies, do we? Do we have anything that we can hold them to time mines wise?
When this project was started, our utility permit was, hadn't seen quite this large of a project, I don't think. I don't remember the exact date when that utility, it's an ordinance and a permit application that you guys task us with, task our department with approving. It, it is in need of some update, technically by state statute, and Jay might correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they have ninety days to remove them, or to move them once notified in writing. So this project has not been, or they were notified in, I believe, May of nineteen that, hey, this project's coming, you need to get your stuff moved, and they, and we had another meeting in December of two thousand and nineteen saying, hey, where are you guys at with this? When are you going to start? It might have been January, and they started about two weeks prior to this project starting, so Oftal did get put behind quite a bit with having those utilities in the way.
Okay, so in the future, you're going to revise some?
It's on the list of things to do. So we're hoping to get it done before our South Rochford Road project gets let, because that'll be another large one. We have already been in contact with all those utility companies. We've given them the official notice to proceed, we've obtained all the right of way on South Rochford Road, so they, they can proceed anytime, and we're hope, you know, we're hoping they get their stuff done this year, so if not, there'll be a conversation to be had there.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Further, further questions, Joe? Got a motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Joe, we do need to go back to supplies.
I was wondering about that. I can, I'll just run through some of our numbers here real quick. Aggregate, I just picked out one line item out of each of these, I didn't pick all of them out, so. Aggregate materials, which is kind of your, your, your base course, your, your sugar rock that we use for deep patching, stuff like that. The base course was eight dollars a ton last year, this year it's also eight dollars a ton, so no difference there. Asphalt composite bid, that got kind of screwed up. Asphalt composite bid last year was coming at seventy dollars a ton, and this year it's also seventy dollars a ton. So that asphalt composite is for, say, a half mile, three quarters of mile, mile stretch of road that starts falling apart, that we weren't actually anticipating that falling apart. We can then, this is just a contract to, to go to this company and say, hey, we need you guys to come do an overlay, and that's the price that you see there. Asphalt maintenance materials, this is the material that we use for our patching crew. Last year was fifty-five dollars and twenty, fifty-five, twenty-five per ton, this year it's fifty-four, sixty per ton, difference of about sixty-five cents. Concrete pipe, an eighteen-inch concrete pipe, last year was twenty-one oh one per foot, this year it's twenty-one sixty-one per foot, a difference of about sixty cents. Our cutback and emulsified asphalt, which is what we use in our chip seal, so that's your AE one fifty and your SS one H. Last year, the AE one fifty was five hundred and ten dollars per ton, this year it's five hundred and twelve dollars per ton, difference of two, two dollars a ton. Our de-icing sand, which we didn't have to use a whole lot of this year, thank, thank the Lord, I guess, I don't know. Hopefully we get more moisture. Last year was seventeen seventy-five, this year is seventeen fifty, a difference of a quarter, so.
Any questions on the supplies? Do I have a motion to approve the supplies?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Headcock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, Human Resources, Jim, John Moore.
Morning Commissioners, John Moore, Pennington County HR. I've got a few new positions here actually for review. The, the first is a position in the, in the Commission Office for Administrative Assistant One, so it is a new title within that office, and the DBM rating is A thirteen, and the starting base is at fourteen forty-six an hour. So again, the motion could read, I move to approve the BLC Administrative Assistant One position, DBM of A thirteen, base rate of fourteen forty-six per hour, and authorize Human Resources to update the position listing, which is on file in the Human Resource Office.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a, and a second from Commissioner LaCroy. Motion from Headcock, a second from LaCroy. This is a position that we've talked about before, and actually, this is, this is kind of old news.
You've approved the FTE, we just didn't have the job title.
Your old news, Holly.
So I've got, I've got a motion and a second to approve the Administrative Assistant One in the Commission Office. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next one is the Grant and Budget Analyst in Health and Human Services.
Correct, so a, a new position title within the Health and Human Services Office will not create additional headcount within the office. It's basically recognizing the changes as that department has evolved with things that have come by. So it's a new position title, Grant and Budget Analyst, with a DBM of B twenty-five and a starting rate of twenty-five seventy-four per hour. And again, the motion could read, I move to approve the HHS Grant and Budget Analyst position at DBM of twenty, B twenty-five, with a starting rate of twenty-five seventy-four per hour, and to authorize Human Resources to update the position listing, which is on file in the Human Resource Office.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Got a motion and a second. It's a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Lassiter, to approve the Grant Budget Analyst. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I might just point out that we're, we're going to, since we've changed our wage structure and gone to a new system, that over the course of probably at least the next twelve months, we're going to be dealing with some of these from time to time as to, it's not creating additional personnel.
No.
So.
No, thank you for that clarification, Chair.
Chairman, I thought Barry was doing this, so why repay somebody extra? Just kidding, Barry. You have a lot of job description in there, Barry, for yourself.
Item three, Project Manager. Item three, is a Senior Construction Project Manager within the Buildings and Grounds Department. New position title, the FTE was actually approved back in early February. We've defined and created the job description now to, to help us understand what the needs are in that position. So again, no new FTE at this point, just a creation of a position. And the motion could read, I move to approve the Buildings and Grounds Senior Construction Project Manager position at a DBM of C forty-three and a base rate of thirty-one forty-six per hour, and to authorize Human Resources to update the position listing, which is on file in the Human Resources Office.
Is there a motion? Move to approve. Got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect, a second?
Second.
From Commissioner LaCroy. Might just point out that Mike Cool is here also, but we've been working with Mike, trying to get his positions filled, that he's had open with his, within his department, and creating some, the, the job descriptions and so forth, and I think we're, we're moving forward okay, aren't we, Mike? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I've got a, Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I just want to make comment when I was going through this, you know, I like this, the classification of the Senior Construction Manager. You know, we're giving a couple different options, and I think that gives him opportunity to move up, do some help in that department as far as, or hire that, you know, outside of one or the other, but I think I'd like, I'd like the Senior Construction title, and...
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Job description, thanks.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item number twenty, uh, Scott Guffy, Natural Resources. Morning, Scott.
Morning Commissioners. Uh, Scott Guffy, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. Uh, this is a request to change the department name from Weed and Pest to Natural Resources. Uh, it's probably been in the works for five years now. Uh, ever since, we changed the title of my position to better encompass all that this position does now. Has it, has evolved into a lot of forestry management, uh, practices, among other things. We've been a little hesitant, uh, trying to figure out, you know, with the Weed, Weed and Pest Board and stuff, and as it's referred to in state statute, uh, I think the way around it is the Weed and Pest Board remain the name of the Weed and Pest Board, uh, as our first to statute. Um, and then we'll change the name of the department to more encompass now that, you know, we're getting more and more into the forestry management, uh, in the fall and winter months. Um, as I mentioned in my memo, it's not, it's, a lot of that constant defrayed now from the timber that we, we harvest and we can sell to the mills, so that, it's not that we're growing the department just for the fact of growing the department. I believe what we're doing with our forestry management and our field breaks, it has a lot of benefit to the county.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions of Scott?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Headcock.
Chairman, um, number one, how long have you been with us, Scott?
Twenty-three years.
Yes, sir, I wanted to recognize that, that's a long time, uh, and, uh, his innovation and the things that he has done for this department is huge. If you are on his board, and this is my first year, but I have visited with, uh, Scott before. He does some amazing practices for earning money and, and keeping his department way ahead of this game. Um, for the future, though, I would like to look as, look into some of the Pilt money, um, so he's not guessing on how much his budget's gonna make the next year. Um, some of that Pilt money can be used because it is for natural, uh, Black Hills Natural Forest, uh, through the state. Um, just sir, for something that's moving forward in the future for this board, um, to help him out with some of his budget. Because again, he does some really innovating things, uh, for his department, but he could use a little bit more help, um, to make that budget balance a little bit. So, um, the natural resources, again, we use a lot of the timber and stuff to make the money, uh, for this department. So he has been doing this on his own for years, but anything we could do for this commission to make sure he's ahead of, uh, ahead of taking care of his department and his people in his department. So, I do approve of changing this. We've been thinking about this for a long time, so I'm glad he moved it forward. Another thing is, is we have some marijuana stuff moving forward in the legislature, and, uh, we've been having calls, I hear, about the weed and pest program. So, um, this is not part of the weed program, program that's moving forward in South Dakota, so.
Different type of weed.
Yes. So, just so we know that, um, some of that, and I don't know if, I, I didn't think about this, Scott, but do you answer questions on weed or marijuana, or is it has nothing to do with this because it is weed?
Right, um, there is quote-unquote ditch weed, um, that grows wild in the ditches, uh, that, not so much in Pennington County, but you get into some of the counties near the Missouri River. They have quite an issue with it just because it grows wild along the, along the, uh, the roads and stuff like that. But, out here in Pennington County, we've, we run into it every once in a while, but it's not a huge issue.
That's something we deal with, is the marijuana issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Supposedly grows wild.
Yeah. Yeah, every time we find it, we need to notify the Sheriff's Department, just so it's not cultivated.
You know, Scott, I, I just got to say, you know, when you started with the company, or I shouldn't say the company, but Weed and Pest, it was Weed and Pest. I mean, you're the one that's made it to what it is today, which, which was actually the Natural Resource Department. I mean, your involvement not only in the community, but building with your employees and so forth, you've evolved that department into what it is, and, and I'm proud of you, and we should, and, and thank you for all the work that you've done, because I think you're outstanding and you're a standout in our community for it. I mean, at Black Hills National Forest Board meetings, they look up to you for advice too, and, and, and your resources and so forth. And that's, that's pretty amazing in my eyes, and I just wanted to take the moment to express that you've made that department to what it is today. I appreciate it, appreciate it.
Is there a motion to change the name of Weed and Pest Department to Natural Resources?
So moved.
Mr. Chair, I was gonna say, I, I make that motion, the second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Headcock, second by Commissioner Lassiter to change the name. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
So, Scott, when do you, uh, do the business cards then?
Yeah, that'll be the next step, is, uh, change the, uh, the signage on the vehicles and the buildings and stuff like that.
I like the new name.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Item twenty-one is, uh, twenty-twenty-one legislative session. I think we've, uh, pretty well hashed out in most of the previous meetings, those bills that, uh, pertain to us. The only one that, uh, that I think, um, in my mind is worthy of discussion is the one for the, um, sewage and the infrastructure for, uh, Box Elder, uh, did not make it through the legislature. And so, in the meantime, Commissioner Ross Connect and I, and, um, Joe Miller and Sean Smith have met with Box Elder. Uh, we are going to have continuing, uh, meetings with them, uh, relative to moving forward with a, a plan of action. And so, that is in the works, uh, just nothing has formally been developed at this point in time, but at the same time, we'll probably be meeting with some state agencies in regard to it.
Chairman, based on that, we do have that TIF coming forward. Is the infrastructure, meaning the water, sewer, and that area gonna be covered with that twenty-five million dollar project with that TIF? Because that's some huge infrastructure, meaning water, sewer, and different things out there that they might be needing. Do we have any information on that?
Uh, we, we really don't at this point in time. I mean, that's all part of this, uh, planning process of what needs to be done in order to accomplish this. Part of, part of what, what was it, we were attempting to do with the legislation was to really, uh, create some seed money so that we had the, could apply for a build grant, uh, for the fourteen sixteen and the Radar Hill Road. And, uh, that would have leveraged about twenty-five million in federal funds for that project. So, without the, the four million seed money, uh, we don't have the avenue in which to move forward at this point in time without, without going back and being able to figure out how or where, uh, that four million can come from.
So Chairman, we do TIFs for infrastructure, and maybe that's, uh, something that we could either add or, uh, think about doing out there, um, for that infrastructure. Again, it's something well needed, and you are having some major development out there and moving Box Elder forward. I think they're gonna need something to that effect, or add it to one of the TIFs that we already have, is what we've done before in Rapid City, based on that it's infrastructure, it's not just affordable housing or something like that.
Right.
So maybe, maybe look into that area, sir.
Good point, thank you. Is there anything else anybody else has relative to legislative session? You know, some of the, some of these bills are still waiting for the governor's decision on it. We don't really anticipate any issues there, but they do have a veto day, uh, coming up in which the governor could present some vetoes relative to some of this legislation.
Well, thank you for you and Travis going to peer and representing Holly, helping with some of that representation and getting things done. I mean, that's a lot of work, and we all, uh, thank you for that, I saw, with some of the email, just thank yous for your work, uh, Gary and, and Travis being there and Holly doing that extra work for us. So, makes a huge difference for us to represent, and without you guys, we wouldn't be, so we have good representation from this board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item we have coming up is not scheduled until ten-thirty, so I suggest that we have a motion for a ten-minute, uh, recess.
Move for a break.
Same.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Take a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Let's, let's, um, adjust that. Let's make that motion to go into a board of adjustment.
That's what we meant.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to, um, um, convene in the board of adjustment. Good morning. First item, Alan and Tamara Schmidt.
Okay, uh, good morning, Cody Sack, Planning Department. Item A is subdivision regulation variance SB twenty-one dash zero-one. It is to waive the requirement not to construct additional water storage for domestic use and fire protection requirements in a planned unit development. The applicant is Alan and Tamara Schmidt. Uh, the property, the subject property is three point oh three acres, zoned planned unit development. Uh, staff recommends denial of subdivision regulation variance SB twenty-one dash zero-one. There is no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of, uh, Pennington County Subdivision Regulation, section five hundred point seven and seven hundred point one. If the board of adjustment disagrees and decides to approve this request, staff would add one condition, and that condition be that subdivision regulation variance SB twenty-one dash zero-one only applied a lot for Block One of Rushmore Ranch Estates, or, sorry, that says Rushmore Ranch Estates, it should say Mountain Meadows. When approving, uh, variances, there are two prongs that are looked at. Prong one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest. This is considering the entire public, not just the neighbors. For number one, uh, yes, the request is not directly a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat or nuisance, but if a fire occurs, the undersized water storage could affect the ability to stop the spread to a neighboring property. Also, Southern Hills Water District only has water hookups for seven lots within Mountain Meadows subdivision. If water is, storage is not added, six lots within the subdivision would be without water. That is a correction, there's actually, would only be four lots, two of those lots are, um, common lots. Number two, uh, the subject property is zoned planned unit development, three point oh three acres, and matches the surrounding zoning and lot sizes in the area. Applicants want to place a single-family residence on the property, a use by right in a planned unit development. Uh, number three, under subdivision regulations, um, subdivision of fifteen or more lots must be served by a central water system. Mountain Meadows subdivision is connected to Rushmore Ranch Estates' water system. Plot note number thirteen on the Mountain Meadows states that after sixty-five building permits have been issued between the two subdivisions, additional water storage is required. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan? The future land use of the property is planned unit development, so yes. And number five, yes, inadequate water storage has the potential to inhibit the water, uh, to fight a fire in the area that would in turn affect public safety. Also, inadequate water storage could affect surrounding property and access to water. Prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance, these are physical conditions, not money or economical hardships. Uh, number one, no. No special condition exists on the property that would prevent additional water storage. The property is hilly, forested, and flat. There is no impediment to constructing additional water storage. Property history, the lot is vacant, many structures, and currently, uh, the applicants are going through vacation of plat VP twenty-one dash O-two, which will be heard later at this meeting. Um, some subdivision history, on June sixth, two thousand and eight, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty dash zero-eight with fifteen conditions. One of those conditions, condition five, said that prior to applying for preliminary plat, the applicant provide engineered plans to meet fire flow of not less than a thousand gallons per minute for two hours, or offer other alternatives to be reviewed by the county fire coordinator. On December second, the Board of Commissioners approved preliminary plat twenty dash zero-eight with sixteen conditions. Uh, condition thirteen states that a fire flow of five hundred gallons per minute be provided if all homes in the area are equipped with residential fire, fire sprinkler systems per NFPA standards. If all homes are not equipped with such systems, the thousand gallons per minute must be provided. If fire sprinklers are not installed within the residence in Mountain Meadows subdivision, the Southern Hills Water District would need to be able to provide a thousand gallons per minute for two hours. Talking with Southern Hills Water, they do not have the water storage or capacity to provide the, um, hundred and twenty thousand gallons. Um, if fire sprinklers are installed within the residence, Southern Hills Water would need to be able to provide five hundred gallons for two hours. Southern Hills Water had their engineer do, um, some modeling, and if there are fire sprinklers in the house, they do meet the required fire flow, so they would have adequate water if there are fire sprinklers in the house. Uh, request for comment, the Battle Creek Fire District recommends that, um, at a minimum, state codes be followed. The applicants are proposing to place a single-family residence on the property. A note on the plat states that one sixty-five building permits have been issued between Mountain Meadows. Additional water storage would need to be added. And there have been sixty-five building permits issued between Mountain Meadows subdivision and Rushmore Ranch Estates. The applicant has provided a letter from Southern Hills Water Association, appearing to state that adequate water storage for seven hookups on Mountain Meadows subdivision. This would be four lots within the subdivision without adequate water. Talking with Southern Hills on Friday, um, the other four lots that would be remaining in the subdivision would not be guaranteed water in the future if they came to develop those lots if additional water storage is not added. A compromise between the county and commission and the developer in two thousand and eight agreed that if there's fire sprinklers in the house, five hundred gallons per minute, um, could be used, um, which would require sixty thousand gallons, they would have that if they met it. And, uh, just a little history, in two thousand and two, the Battle Creek Fire burned areas near Rushmore Ranch Estates subdivision, and part of Rushmore Ranch had to actually evacuate. Um, so a little history on why we think that there's such, such strict, um, fire codes in the area. So again, staff is recommending denial of subdivision regulation variance SB twenty-one dash zero-one, as there was no special condition on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County subdivision regulations, five hundred point seven and seven hundred point one.
So Cody, our chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Headcock.
So at this time, why didn't they put a moratorium or something on their properties because of fire storage or fire mitigation on their, i- it doesn't make sense to me, because then you have people like these folks coming in, building the house or wanting to build the house, and then telling them later, you don't have enough, you, you need five hundred thousand gallons for storage in there in order to put a fire out. Because how many, again, how many units, do you have, fifty-six or something like that in that, in that area already?
For, for Mountain Meadows or for Mountain Meadows and Rushmore Ranch?
Or all the water that they're supposedly, um, telling people they have? How many units is that per both developments?
How many hookups do they have? Is that, sorry?
Meaning, is there, there's not enough water for all the hookups? And, and then they're telling us now that there's four units that would have to basically not be built because of the storage?
So, so in, from talking with Southern, Southern Hills Water in two thousand and eight or nine, they agreed to, um, supply water to seven lots in Mountain Meadows subdivision. Um, why the other four lots were not added, he could not say, say he was, I don't know if he was a part of it at the time. He couldn't say why the other four weren't added. Um, Mountain Meadows was supposed to be a, a fifty lot subdivision. Um, I don't know if they were planning on increasing the, there, there are steps for different, once you hit different phases, different water storage. So after the sixty-fifth permit, there was supposed to be thirty thousand gallons added, which would be enough for the, um, phase one of Mountain, Mountain Meadows, up to eighty-some lots, I believe, if I remember correctly. Um, so why the other four weren't added, I'm not.
So, so let me ask you something. How many of them have fire sprinklers in their houses in order to mitigate? And number two, um, we're gonna have these people put fire sprinkler in there, and how's that gonna help? I mean, we, we gotta start somewhere, I understand, but how's that gonna help if the rest of them don't have fire sprinkling? And it's been recommended since, what, since this started?
The, a- adding, adding the spr- fire sprinklers would reduce the amount of water, um, that needed to be supplied. So if there's not enough, i- if fire sprinklers are added, Southern Hills can, can guarantee that they can meet the fire flow requirements that were, were set forth for the subdivisions. If those aren't added, talking to Dawn at Southern Hills, they can't guarantee that enough water for fire flow would be. I, I think, talking to, talking to the engineer, only two nodes, and the nodes being the, the fire hydrants in the area, would meet the thousand gallons that would be required.
I guess that's what I was saying last time, just because you have fire hydrants doesn't mean it can put a fire out. Number two, um, how many other houses have fire sprinklers in that area?
Uh, this would, this is actually the first, this would be the first building permit in Mountain Meadows, so not, the answer would be none.
So it'd be, this would be the first permit that we would let build a house in Mountain Meadows?
Correct.
Okay.
And.
Now I understand why.
And, and, um, at the previous meetings, the applicants did state that they were aware of those notes on the plat. And there was, there is a note on the plat that says that the fire sprinklers are required.
Okay, in order to meet the fire mitigation issues that they need to put out the fire of their house?
For what was required, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Cody, when you did the-
Cody, when you did the site inspection, what did you observe as far as density, tree canopy, topography?
Uh, topography, it's hilly, flat, and then trees are sparse, they're spaced out, not, it's not fully forested, I would say.
Did you take any photos while you were out there?
I did not, no.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna move to approve SA twenty-one oh-one with one condition, based upon the following findings. The special condition involves an intangible hardship in the former property rights, more so than a physical hardship in this particular case. The hardship involves the owner's property rights or loss thereof. And it's my opinion that the applicants or owners of lot four are simply victims of a land developer that never fulfilled their obligation to provide adequate water storage for Mountain Meadow subdivision. In my opinion, by not approving the variance, the owners are not allowed to fully maximize a recently purchased residential lot that I assume they purchased in good faith, thinking that it was a, a building permit could easily be obtained without addressing the sprinkler systems or additional storage. Yes, ordinances are needed to protect property rights of Pennington County taxpayers. By granting this variance, I suggest property rights have been addressed and substantial justice has been ex- executed.
Second.
I'll make a substitute.
We've got a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Adcock.
I'll make a substitute to deny based on findings of not enough water and being able to put out a fire. Um, they put this on a deed for a reason, that there's not enough gallons per minute, uh, to put out a fire. Um, it's not just about the surrounding area, it's about your house. Um, I work on the Fire Service Board, I am on the Fire Service Board, and I'll just say, um, it's a major issue in the hills, not having enough gallons per minute to put out fires, and who are they gonna blame when the fire cannot be put out?
I'd second that motion.
Okay, so let me clarify. Uh, Commissioner Adcock, your substitute is simply to deny?
With staff recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
To, to uphold the staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
And I have a second from Commissioner Laster for the discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Roskinak.
I understand that the plat says sixty-five. And I believe when they said sixty-five, that magic number is based on sixty-five, uh, residential lots utilizing Southern Hills Water. However, out of those sixty-five permits, seven of those lots have their own wells. So they're not taking any demand off of that current water system. That's why they added the other seven over the Mountain Meadows, so nothing's really changed. It's just the wording is kind of messy on the plat. But in real life, common sense, there's just as much water there that than there was originally when they, uh, when they put the sixty-five, uh, on the plat.
Well, Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Adcock.
So that, why would you put it on a deed if it didn't matter? If you were gonna sell something and you put it on a deed, it, it would be the people selling it, not the people buying it, for a reason. If there wasn't a reason for that, um, whether they had seven wells or they had enough water, they wouldn't put him in the first place. They're trying to protect the safety and tell the people, like we keep saying on this commission, to make sure that you put this on the deed so the people buying it, in all transparency, know what's going on in that deed or that plat. So, um, I appreciated that, that it was put on there. And, uh, again, fire sprinkling for a house for safety for me is, uh, pretty major.
Mr. Chairman.
For the discussion, Commissioner Laster.
I'd also like to point out that, you know, when you put it on that plat, um, you know, when you're buying a piece of property or buying a home, it's your responsibility to read that, and if you see that on there, I mean, you should question that and, and, and verify what that means as you're, as you're moving forward. Uh, I think it's good for the Board of Commissioners to have required that, because then again, we're putting everything upfront, so whenever someone is buying that property, they know what they're getting themselves into. So that's why I also agree with the denial.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else wish to speak, uh, before Commissioner Roskinak speaks a second time?
Mr. Commissioner.
General Lacroix.
I, I'm supporting this because I think when this was originally, if you look back when it was done, I think it was well thought out and planned out. And that's why they were, they wanted the additional storage unit after so many. And as you see is, is, this is starting up, and there's still seven left before they're looking for the requirement of the additional storage unit to meet the flows. The flows are, are where, are, are where they're at from what I'm reading, and there are other recommendations as far as the sprinklers and so forth. So I was in support of, of the motion to move this forward because it, the magic number's gonna be, what was it, sixty? To meet that requirement that they were talking about, the sixty-five, they're only at fifty-seven. I think things changed, developments changed, and that, I think when they were looking this up, that's what they put in, and that's why I'm supporting this. The next item of it was the sprinkler system, I would support sprinkler system, but, um, I'll see where this goes, but I, I agree with, with Ron on this.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I guess, you know, when you read the whole packet, and we've been into it for a month or two weeks, that they actually had a letter from Southern, Southern, Southern Hills Water saying that, uh, you know, fifty-seven lots had been serviced. So I think that letter led them to believe, uh, that it was okay to, to move forward, more so than the plat, because they still, because they were led to believe from that letter, if, uh, I don't have the letter in front of me, that they, that they had the green light to go ahead and build without doing the fire mitigation. So there's a lot of, uh, moving parts here, but I think they were, I think they were misled, and I think we need to represent them.
Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Laster.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I just want to clarify something here, and some of the history, and Cody, if you can help me out here. Um, subdivision history, uh, five B, it says in here, one of the conditions, number thirteen, if fire sprinklers are not installed within the residence of Mountain Meadows subdivision, the Southern Hills Water District would need to be able to provide one thousand GPM for two hours for a hundred and twenty thousand gallons. Can that water district meet that criteria?
Uh, no.
So if it can't meet that criteria, then we should deny it based on that, because that is a condition of approval, is my position and standing on it.
So when, when talking with, with the engineer, there's only two nodes that would meet the thousand gallons, and they ran that, that model based on what's currently there. So even if there's only fifty-seven hookups, there's, there's, they're still saying that they don't have the adequate water flow to meet that thousand gallons if the fire sprinklers are not added to, to the residence.
Right. Follow-up, Mr. Chair? So with that, then, then it's also saying right after that, if fire sprinklers are installed, which is why the Board of Commissioners was, gave them that capability, is that if it couldn't meet a thousand gallons, then they could do it at five hundred gallons per minute as long as the homes had fires, sprinklers in them. If, if, am I understanding that correctly?
The, the way I understood reading through that, yes, is that when, when the layout plat was approved, it was for the thousand for two hours, or they could come up with an alternative, and their alternative was to put fire sprinklers in the house, which bumped that requirement down to five hundred gallons per minute instead of a thousand.
Okay, that would be, again, one of the reasons, under condition number thirteen, that I would consider support the denial. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Chairman, it was fifty-two, six accounts in Rushmore Ranch subdivision, and Mountain Meadows was seven, and now they're telling them four of those lots don't have enough adequate water. So, bottom line is, again, we're gonna put seven lots out there. If we're gonna start something, if it's a new, like Cody said, the first one that we're putting out there, we should set examples so the rest of them understand that, you know, adequate wa- water supply, uh, for their housing development is huge. So, not putting sprinklers in the first one, and then, and then going back and forth, I think we should start a precedent of making sure that, at this time, that there's enough water supply to put out the fires for these houses. So, that also shows if, um, further development, that, it does say it on the deed, we did it on the first one, and it makes a difference when I'm buying a house, we're having an issue in another development with the same issue. Um, having people with water, adequate water, or fire flows, or just good water, um, to put it on the deed or do something for full disclosure. So this one was full disclosure when I bought my house or looked at the deed, so I did know what was gonna happen in full disclosure beforehand. So, and they do have the right to come and ask for that, which, which I appreciate, but I also think fire protection's pretty huge.
So, Cody, the, uh, alternative to this would be, uh, a well?
So, they, they could dig their own well, they'd still have to go through this, the, the variances and stuff, but then they'd have, they'd have the water, um. This is the Madison, so it'd be, could be a thousand feet deep for a well, if that's what. But there, there is that alternative, yes. Um, also talking with Don, the, the Mountain Meadows subdivision could form like a water district and, um, come up with the funding to, to Rushmore Ranch Estates to increase the water storage. I believe it's thirty thousand gallons of water storage that is required for, for these lots.
Okay, going to, uh, we've got a substitute motion here, which would, uh, uphold the staff recommendation of denial, uh, all those.
Mr. Chair, Cole McNeese, State's Attorney's Office. Uh, before you vote on the substitute motion, would you care to ask anybody in the audience if they have any thoughts that they would like to share?
Sure, sure. Anybody in the audience like to speak relative to this?
Thanks. Um, Alan, Tamara Schmidt, a couple of questions we have. Of the sixty-five permits that were issued out there, how many of those were for dwellings? Because the last one on here that we have is for a shed, so that would make it sixty-five, first of all. And how many out there have been all for dwellings out of the sixty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one question we gotta know right now.
Like, the last building permit that was given was actually for a, um, a detached garage, or, I'm sorry, that one. The last one was for a shed barn accessory. Now, how does that constitute as using the water supply as a sixty-fifth building permit? Because I thought this was all due to, um, the amount of water we're gonna use and things like that, where if somebody puts up a eight-by-ten-foot shed, how does that constitute as a? I know you have to get building permit for it, but why is that included as, uh, like a residential dwelling permit?
Cody, do you have a response?
Uh, yeah, Cody Sack, uh, Planning Department. Um, back when, when this was going on, Brittany did, ran a report, and there were sixty, at the time she ran the report back in October, there were sixty-three single-family houses that were applied for, for building permits. Um, in the, since October, there's been two, um, that were added, and since this, um, request was done, there's been another two or three as well. So I think there's like sixty-seven, sixty-eight building permits for houses out there now.
For actual houses?
For, for what was ran, yes, from the information that I have from Brittany, that it was, there's sixty-five houses, single-family residents.
Last house that we have that was added was in December. And then this, um, here, uh, then the, the shed was added January twenty-first. So these houses would have had to been added here between January twenty-first and today.
Well, Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Adcock.
So, the bottom line for me is, Southern Black Hills Water System is saying sprinklers, they put it on your deed sprinklers, because they don't have enough water supply. Now, they came back and they said they had seven lots open, now they're telling us that four of those lots aren't open because of water supply. So we can go through all those other permits, but the bottom line, I'm listening to the Black Hills Waters, or Southern Black Hills Water System saying that they put it on those deeds for a reason, and if they have seven lots, um, and maybe even if you sprinkler, those four of their lots, besides the two, uh, the other three, could be built. So you're actually helping the development as well by putting sprinklers and not using as much, uh, water supply.
But I'm gonna go back to the question, we never got that deed part, all we got, we never got that until after I requested our land be surveyed again, so I know exactly where our land was. That's when we got that little plat thing. So when we bought this property, we never had that. All we had was that one sheet that says HOA, and then they told us the HOA was dissolved. So we thought, all right, there's nothing left. And all of a sudden, we tried to get the land ser- that's when we got that paper saying that had, have all those sprinkler systems in there in sixty-five, so we never got that.
But sir, the bottom line here is fire safety. Fire safety of being able to put a fire out at your house and the surrounding area. That's the bottom line here. So.
Our bottom line is, we get, we need a building permit first. That's what we're asking first thing, is to get a building permit to put a house on there. And you guys are, the key's denying us to get a building permit after we bought this land. And then I'd like to approach the sprinkler system.
He's not denying your building permit, he's saying that you have to sprinkler to get your building permit, sir.
Okay, and I guess we'd agree with that, but it's just that, like, um, Commissioner Rosnick said, we were misled, because what we were given by our realtor was this. And this does not contain a plat or a deed. It contains the HOA covenants, and that was pressed upon us several times. You guys need to check on this, you guys need, we were never given that plat. And then the other thing is, when we went into Pennington Title and signed our, um, deed, there is a paper here that actually states, "From the Pear West Land Company for future water storage." "South Dakota Corporation of Three-Nineteen South Coteau, Pear, South Dakota, hereby identifies a future reserve to be located on the following described property, common lot area of block one of Mountain Meadow subdivision, Pennington County, South Dakota." It's saying, "The future reservoir will be constructed to hold an additional thirty thousand gallons, and will, in combination with the existing reservoir, now owned and operated by Rushmore Ranch Estates, and, and have a total capacity of ninety-five thousand gallons." We were, when we signed this, our deed to our land, we were signing, or looking at this and going, oh, this was signed, signed in two thousand ten. So, why we as landowners have to look at the whole infrastructure of Mountain Meadow subdivision, we were told, oh, yeah, if there's going to be thing, um, more land sold, yep, we'll make sure there's water for those developments.
Well, they say future reserve, which they have not put in there at this point, so.
So what, so what gave them the right to sell us these properties?
I guess that would be your court right to take them back to court, but we're saying, in order for your safety, fire sprinklers are needed. So, um, that's, that's our bottom, or that's my bottom line, and why I'm voting that way.
And I understand that, you know.
You purchased yours when?
I'm sorry?
You purchased your property when?
Um, we purchased it, um, in September or October? I believe it was October.
Oft-
Twenty-twenty.
Of twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Laster.
Cody, when was that plat filed?
Two thousand ten.
So the plat with all the documentation about having the water suppression and everything was filed back in two thousand ten?
Yeah.
Cody, you wanna answer?
It was, it was recorded in two thousand ten.
Okay.
Other questions?
Addressing your fire safety, one thing that's been left out.
Uh, you need to identify yourself, please.
My name's Chad, I'm general contractor with these guys, I'm trying to help them build the house. But one thing that's been left out, I've had several conversations with, uh, Don at Southern Hills Water, is while it doesn't meet the thousand gallons that they want, they do have a fire hydrant three hundred feet from the house that does provide six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, and is capable of putting a fire out up to three thousand square foot structure. Their structure is under fourteen hundred square feet. So it's, it's not as if they have no means of putting a fire out without a thousand gallons per minute. There is a fire hydrant there, it does put out water, it was tested at six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, it did meet the pressure rating, and it is technically good up to a three thousand square foot structure.
So Chairman, can I ask a question?
Commissioner Adcock.
When was that tested?
Uh, it sounds like within the last matter of month or so.
Yeah.
So when you talked to the Southern Hills Black, or Southern Black Hills Water System, they told you something different than Cody?
No, this wasn't, so, so this is, again, Don at Southern Hills Water agrees that it does not meet what Cody's wanting, the thousand gallons per minute. But it does rate out at six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, which, according to them, is enough water flow for a structure up to three thousand square feet. So if, so, so keep in mind, this, the sprinkler system of a house does not do anything for wildland fires. If a fire comes through that neighborhood, it's not gonna save their house. What it's trying to prevent is a fire starting in their house and spreading to the neighbors. So the sprinkler system comes on, puts the fire out, hopefully before that happens. There's Rushmore Ranchettes, there's fifty-some houses in that development, their neighbors have no sprinkler systems. This will be the first house in that development with a sprinkler system, and there could be up to seven more houses with sprinkler systems. Those seven houses do all have fire- Those seven houses do all have fire hydrants along their property. And those fire hydrants can put out at least the six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, which would be capable for that fire department to hook to inadequate to, to put out, you know, a three thousand square foot structure.
Let me ask you something, sir. So you have one fire hydrant that does that. And that's one fire hydrant that would do that and the rest, you would ba- basically drain the system by putting and using that one fire hydrant, cause they only gets, it, it's not like, if you look at their total amount of water that's in their systems from these, um, I don't, I'm not seeing six hundred and fifty thousand gallons per minute.
Six hundred and fifty gallons per minute. This is just what that one fire hydrant next to their property is, is rated for. Now, keep in mind, all of these numbers, what Don tells me, are rated at half capacity. So they have to provide all of this water at half capacity. They don't allow it to get below half. So when they say, what they're looking for, for storage and everything, all these numbers, that's based on half capacity.
So when did they put the fire hydrant in and why would they put on the deed that these have to fire sprinkler because they don't have enough capacity of water to put fires out?
So again, this all goes back to the fact that they want a thousand gallons per minute, not six hundred and fifty. So they want the minimum, the, they want the five hundred. So right now, they are meeting that five hundred gallons per minute because they're actually six hundred and fifty gallons per minute. So they're saying they need the thousand though to get rid of the sprinkler system. Condition. But, but again, all this is, all I'm saying is for fire concern, this is still, look at it this way, if their home, I don't know what the odds are of their home catching on fire, but if their home does start on fire, they still have a reasonably good chance of a fire department, which is a mile down the road from this development, showing up. They would still connect to that fire hydrant, there's no reason not to use it, it's capable of six hundred and fifty gallons per minute. And putting out a structure up to three thousand square foot, this is under fourteen square foot home. They're still gonna hook up to it and they're still gonna try to put the fire out. And then there's still going to be fifty-seven other structures in the neighborhood without sprinkler system.
So you have, do you have documentation, sir, of this? Because the, based on the fire department, they're not.
I wanna talk to Cody on that, but according to Don, he's sent all of this information to.
Where's the information? It, it's not in our packet.
So I, I don't have any of that information. The information that I gave you today was um, Long Branch Engineering did modeling last Monday and Tuesday, and Don called me on Thursday and gave me that information. And speaking with Don and speaking with Kale, the engineer, they do not have the water to, to supply the fire flows of over a thousand gallons.
Mr. Chair.
Also, also, the, the fire department that is down the road is an unmanned fire department. People would have, the volunteer firefighters would have to respond to that building to respond to the fire.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, most volunteer fire departments are unmanned, to my knowledge, uh, Johnson's sighting, Whispering Pines. Uh, the question I have is that when I did my site inspection, I happened to talk to one of neighbors out there. I could explain that I was the commissioner for that district and I was trying to help these folks out. And he says, yeah, we live up above them. I said, okay, you know, not real close, but you know, maybe a quarter mile. And I said, what kind of pressure do you got? He said, I have to put a pressure reducer on. That seventy-one thousand gallon steel reservoir at the bottom where the water comes out, you got twenty-five pounds per square inch. This gentleman said, uh, even Kale that did the report that you were talking about, that was a dry model, it wasn't out, out, out there really, it was just a dry model on a program. He said the max pressure out there is a hundred and fifty PSI. Where lot four is probably, I'm guessing around a hundred and thirty PSI. And based on the testimony, six hundred and fifty gallons of minimum, the county's minimum's five hundred. I really don't see a problem. I'd like to get these folks a building permit.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
This would be my last comment. I, you know, I'm reading through this and I am full of support, I understand my commissioner's concerns on this, I really do. But on this item A, this is, we're trying to put the requirement on them to put a storage unit out, add the storage unit. You know, it, it says regulation, Allen and Schmidt, to waive the requirements to not construct an additional water storage for domestic use for fire protection. We're kind of, that's what we're, we're, we're voting on is to waive the storage unit deal. The next item is for, in my belief, is on fire sprinkler system for the house and so forth. So I am in support of item A and would take B up as, I, I, I won't say that right now. But I mean, that's, I just wanted to kind of get us back to that, I don't think it's fair that we'd be requiring you to put the storage unit on there.
Another discussion. Anything else you wanted to add?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, we're back to the substitute motion. Uh, just a reminder, we're sitting as a board of adjustment, takes a super majority. Um, to uh, pass anything in Board of Adjustment. All those in favor of the substitute motion, which would?
Commissioner Drews.
Uh, yes.
Sorry.
Colin.
When, to approve something, you are correct, uh, that it is a super majority, but for the substitute motion, I believe it's just three. I just wanted to point that out to the record.
Okay.
I'm sure you already knew that. I'm just trying to be careful, thank you.
So substitute motion is to deny, is to uphold the staff's recommendation of denial. Uh, all those in favor of the um, substitute motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's have a roll call.
Haddock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
No.
Lassiter?
Nay.
Ross?
Excuse me, nay.
Drews?
Uh, no. So it's three to two? Three to two, two?
So there was only two that voted to deny it, only two yeses to deny.
Okay, so the substitute motion.
Failed.
Then failed. So now we're back to the original motion and this would require the super majority. So the motion that we have before us is the Commissioner Ross Ron, Ron, Ross Connect motion, seconded by Lloyd LaCroy, uh, to um, approve the variance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oh.
Okay, so let's do the roll call on that too.
Okay. Haddock?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
No.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
And Drews?
Aye.
So three to two.
Three to two, uh, so the motion failed uh, by not getting a super majority. And so the uh, variance request is denied. Next item then is B.
Chairman?
Commissioner Haddock.
I will go with staff recommendation to deny.
Second. Got a motion and a second, uh, to deny based on staff recommendation for uh, variance SV twenty-one dash O two. Any discussion?
No, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
This is for the sprinkler system. So it really doesn't do anything without the approval of A. Am I correct? Or is this gonna be a feature, on record for future use that they'd have to?
If, it, it would, it would still have to meet the requirement unless it was waived. So in the future, even if, if it wasn't waived today, they'd have to waive it again in the future if they came in and didn't want spring, say, if they got, if the storage was updated, they would still have to come in and waive sprinklers if it wasn't waived today.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Okay, when this is all said and done, and if this one gets denied, uh, what do we do, the, a building permit? And obviously, they can get a building permit, they might just have to put a sprinkler system in, is that correct?
So in order, in order to get a building permit, they'll have to, the, the subdivision will have to meet the requirements for the water storage and they would have to um, install sprinkler systems.
Okay, I reached out to the Rapp City Fire Department and I disagree. Uh, and I sent you a letter that I got from Tim Billings with Rapp City Fire Department. He said they would have to have a three to five hundred gallon plastic tank in their utility room with a pump. And they don't, uh, didn't, don't matter uh, what the storage capacity is right now. And I put all that in an email, so I just want you to be clear that they can go ahead and as far as I'm, as far as uh, I'm aware, and build that house, put their sprinkler system in and put that uh, stored.
No, because for A, after the sixty, in order to get the next building permit, there had to be more storage added. So more storage has to be added before a building permit can be issued for Mountain Meadows Estates.
I disagree, I respectfully disagree.
Chairman?
Commissioner Haddock.
I guess I don't get it. So you're saying now that you're talking about a storage tank that they can get and put the sprinkler system in when you just voted against a storage tank? That if we put the storage tank in, then we would have been okay.
Two different storage tanks, I think. He's talking about an internal storage tank in the house?
This is what Tim uh, recommended.
Well, what I'm saying is either way, then if that would have came to pass, then they would have been able to put the sprinkler and of course, they get their building permit. But we never heard about that until just now, or I didn't. So you're meeting with people, but you, we're not getting the information, Ron?
I sent that to you, Cody. And I sent the pictures, I've sent everything up. You're just not getting it distributed.
Well, why aren't you shit, well, why aren't you bringing it with you? To tell us, well, you're telling us the information after the fact though, Ron.
I can't sit there and, it'd be a, a quorum if I got with, so I send it to Planning and Zoning thinking that they will share that in the packet.
I guess I don't get this. So if someone, I guess, here's my bottom line, Ron. When I'm going out and I'm looking at stuff, if Cody didn't do it, I do it. And I tell you, I went out there, I took pictures, I did this, I looked at storage, I talked to Tim Billings, I give you all the information to make a good decision, because that's what you should do. And now you're saying after the fact that we already voted on the storage and they're trying to find a solution, that you went out and looked at some of this stuff, Ron? So I guess I'm not getting it, but let's go ahead and move forward.
Colin, do you have something to add?
Uh, yes, Chair. So generally, the commissioners can go out and do uh, site visits if they so choose. Obviously, um, if they take pictures, like Commissioner Ross Connect, generally those get forwarded to staff and staff puts it in uh, to the planning packet. If it wasn't put in the planning packet, then that's either means uh, there was an oversight or alternatively, it wasn't uh, there in time. Um, and by that, I mean it wasn't there in time to be put into place to the packet when that was made. And we generally, as a rule, try to give that to the commissioners all at the same time. Um, it often comes up when we have an applicant who brings their own information and their own facts and then they distribute it.
So Cody, when did you get Ron's stuff?
Uh, I believe the pictures were sent yesterday and the Tim Billings email was sent to Brittany and I on Thursday or Friday.
So when you do a site visit and you go look for it and what they're trying to tell us, Commission, is that if you do that and it's not put in the packet, then you have to distribute it to the commission and make full disclosure before you come up here that you gave this information because you didn't get it in time to put it in the packets. So that wasn't Cody's job, that was Ron's.
No, Mi- Mi- Mr. Chair, I, I've got the email here sent out by Joan yesterday with all seven, seven names on it. It's, it goes to Deb, Gary, Lloyd, Travis, Ron, Brittany, Jason and from, these were from Mr. Ross Connect. And if you go scroll all the way down to them, you'll see that stuff and the photos.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, Tim, Tim's report was a, a good long page explaining the situation. I forwarded that to Brittany. I said, Brittany, would you please forward that on to the Schmitz? So that they would have that. I don't, I'm not gonna sit there and start getting three commissioners talking to each other because that is against the law. So uh, did you receive that uh, email from Tim? It explained the four sprinkler companies, what they do, how much per square foot? Okay.
So, and, and the, the storage tank that's talking about in the email is how the sprinkler systems ran. The storage from the la- from item A is for the entire subdivision. It, it, waiving that one and then having a three hundred gallon storage tank for the fire sprinklers to be ran is completely different than the storage for, that was.
What the variance was put up for.
Was for, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Laster.
Ron, you, uh, Mr. Commissioner Ross Connect, you mentioned that uh, may, unless I heard you wrong, about uh, Mr. Billings' email about the storage tank. I see the email that I have here and I don't see anything about that extra storage tank. Am I missing something? Am I, I'm just trying to understand, you mentioned that they could have a thirty-five hundred gallon tank in their home from Mr. Billings, so that this could work with the sprinkler system. I'm not seeing that in the email. Am I missing an email? Is there another one?
Uh, this was an email from Tim to me, cause I, I was trying to reach out to, but Tim, you know, uh, kinda was involved and, you know, Pat Hall did the stuff up by Rockerville and the, so I didn't know that he'd, he said, I'm very familiar with Rushmore Ranch, I explained that, you know, lot four and the water system. And he come back with about a two-page email, or a one-page email saying, uh, he said they could, I said, what about storage? Nobody's ever said storage, it's just been subjective. He said, Ron, he said, if they put a three to five hundred gallon plastic storage tank in their utility room with a dedicated pump to the sprinkler system, that would be sufficient. He said, you're talking about a dollar fifty to two dollars a square foot. He gave me the four names. And I forwarded that to Planning and Zoning thinking that they would sit there and put it in the package. In the future, I will send it to Holly and ask her to send it to each commissioner.
Chairman, so.
Commissioner Haddock.
Ron, I appreciate all the work you do. You work very hard as a commissioner and you investigate well. And I appreciate everything you do. But there's a process and procedure when you don't get it in time for the packet. It's not Cody's job, it's not Brittany's job, it's not any of the people there's job. It's your job at that point to make sure we get it. If Holly, you need to give it to Holly and she distributes it, that's fine. I don't know um, if that needs to happen or Holly maybe tell me. Does it need to go to the commission up here or what's the process and procedure? Because we're having this where people are investigating, which I appreciate all the work they do, but it's not getting it to us and then um, in the case of the staff, I'm gonna protect the staff. It's not their job at that point to try to distribute it um, on something that was just, came the last couple days.
So yes, um, the short answer is there is a statute one twenty-seven, one point one six that dictates that uh, packet materials have to be distributed twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, uh, which basically gives for meaningful consideration. Um, that is on my shoulders and I am subject to a misdemeanor. So I take packet materials very seriously. Um, if it is not sent in time to be included in the packet, we don't include it. Um, for that very reason, it doesn't give everybody time to consider all the materials at the same time. Um, yeah, absolutely. I mean, any commissioner can go do site visits, they can um, investigate, but we have to be careful how we handle the documents.
Can we though, Ms. Holly, can Ron by, by chance, or even Deb, or anybody on this commission, say, well, in full disclosure, when I start, I went out and see, talked to Tim Billings and then I also had a site inspect- inspection, but I did not put it in the packet. But in full disclosure, I'm gonna tell you what I found. Isn't that legal?
That would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Because I, Ron, I appreciate everything you do, but um, and all the work you do, because you do. You go above and beyond to see and make sure that your people are taken care of, just like the rest of us. But there's a process and procedure in which that happens. That's the only thing I'm asking. That way, we know what's going on and that you disclose that right away, cause at the beginning, it might have had a, a different outcome. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Colin.
And I just wanna piggyback off what Holly just said, when we get the late information, uh, generally, we try to provide it in a paper copy and get it to the board and then online or have a paper copy available for the public. Um, if that didn't happen today, that's my fault. Um, but my understanding uh, from listening here today is that Commissioner Ross Connect gave that to the applicant, so they were aware of that information as well. And if the board wants that information, then I can uh, go. And if the board wants that information, then I can uh go get copies of it printed off and we can uh take this agenda item up later, uh because I believe there's another variance out.
I think we've got our questions answered. I just wanted to know people to know the process and procedure, and it's not the staff's fault. It's part, part, it's part on us knowing the process.
Just, just for a point of clarification, uh, all the commissioners were listed on it. Uh, this was an email that came uh from Joan yesterday, which was forwarded from Brittany Malter relative to this, which contained the information that Ron had provided. So o- obviously, some of the commissioners did not see that uh information come through.
But there's a process to make sure everybody's on the same page when you're doing site visits. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I think, I think the process was done as just a matter of, that it wasn't just the day before.
Yeah, the timing was off and it wasn't twenty-four hours prior to the start of the meeting.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I just got a question for the applicant. If they wanted to proceed with this, you know, this is the variance on the sprinkler system, knowing that your first item failed. Do you wanna pursue this? And if not, do they get the refund for the, the variance cost?
They, they would have to go in front of the board and request that, that feedback.
Okay, so my question, do you wanna continue?
So you guys denied our building permits, we can't build on this property.
Correct, that's what the first part came up.
Because I think there's some confusion here. I think the confusion is, is the first part is the thirty gallon, thirty thousand gallon storage tank.
Right.
So that's separate from the sprinkler system, correct?
Yeah.
So, so what I think ultimately, they're willing to put the sprinkler system, they're willing to pay the six thousand dollars to add the sprinkler system to the house. But what they obviously can't do is they can't provide a thirty thousand gallon storage tank for the whole development. So the, the problem is, is that sixty-fifth building permit, right, triggered the thirty thousand gallon storage capacity. So they had no idea that the developer of this property wasn't gonna be able to meet that requirement of adding the thirty thousand gallon storage. They are willing to not go after the variance of the sprinkler. So when they first started this, that's what they thought they were doing, is just simply trying to get the variance for the sprinkler system. Then it was brought up. So this is not in the plat or anything. Then it was brought up that the developer has not furnished the thirty thousand gallon storage capacity. So they cannot get a building permit to build on that property in no fashion. And it, any idea what it would cost to add a thirty thousand gallon storage?
Donna at Southern Hills Water was going to talk with Kale, the engineer, and with their attorneys to see what that was. Um, I, I asked him if he could get it back to me by Monday, um, yesterday or early this morning, and I haven't heard back from him yet, so I would not.
But, but it's fair to say it's a lot. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I'm not even gonna hazard a guess, because I have no.
Yeah, it's, it's something a developer does, not a homeowner.
Mr. Chair.
Um, and these people are living in a rental that they have to be out of in April. Uh, I mean, you're denying them the ability to build on that property. They will go ahead and put the sprinkler system in for fire safety, but there's no way you could make it an individual homeowner to supply the thirty thousand gallon storage tank for sixty-five.
But it says to waive the requirement to not construct additional water storage for domestic use and fire protection requirements. Is that the thirty thousand dollar tank, or is that for the whole development?
That's the thirty thousand gallon additional storage tank for the whole entire development.
So Cody, can you answer that?
He can't.
The, the, the additional storage would be for the whole, whole subdivision would have, is what would have to be added. Those, those notes on the plat were put on there as their subdivision regulation requirements. Back in two thousand eight, instead of waiving those, that's how they were gonna meet those requirements. Um, and they were gonna phase it through additional storage. I believe after the first phase, it was thirty, thirty thousand gallons.
Well, these people bought this plat with not knowing that they needed thirty thousand gallons in that development in order to build anything and also to not think they had to put sprinkler system. But if they put the sprinkler system in, isn't uh Black Hills, whatever, water district, aren't they saying? That's what I was understanding, that they said they didn't need to do the storage then. So we're doing the opposite. We shouldn't have had to do the storage, but we should make them do the sprinklers.
Correct. If they, if they install the sprinklers in their house, those seven lots that Rushmore Ranch Estates and Southern Hills Water supplies water to now have water. The four others do not. So there'll still be four others in that subdivision who would not have adequate water.
So I could rescind the first one, and you guys would agree to do the sprinkler system and we could move forward.
Colin, will you come forward, please?
Okay.
That's what we were just.
Colin, uh, uh, the question is, is first of all, we've, we've passed a motion, uh, the, the substitu- no. We passed a motion, okay? Uh, can I get somebody from the prevailing side to ask for reconsideration and actually?
Yeah, rescind.
Yes, Commissioner, uh.
Okay, the attempt would be to, to reconsider that motion, so we get back to ground zero at this point in time because of all the new information that's been.
You have a motion on the floor, though, right now. Do you guys wanna, you, you have a motion on B.
I've got a motion from Haddock and a second from Lassiter.
I'll drop that motion for now to rescind and go back to rescind from the last, if that's okay with.
And I'd agree with that.
Twenty-one dash O two, okay.
I agree.
Okay, so that's been rescinded, so.
It's not a motion to rescind.
Not that one. That one's just to drop the first one.
That was the motion on twenty-one dash O two.
To drop the motion.
Motion maker and second or. And then Commissioner, uh, Chair, I apologize. Uh, you can make that motion to reconsider uh SV twenty-one O two.
That'd be my motion as.
I've got a motion to reconsider the motion of, of twenty-one O one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, Haddock and who is the second?
Lassiter.
So the motion on, uh, before us now is to reconsider by which the motion um was passed, which denied the, the building permit, essentially.
Right. So at this point, because they are willing to move forward, instead of doing, denying staff recommendations, that they will not be required to do the thirty thousand dollar, or thirty thousand gallons per minute tank. Um, with the um, understanding that on the next motion, they will put sprinklers in. And that's why at this point, I am saying that it's okay for me um personally to, to approve this um variance.
Okay, we'll get back to uh ground zero here. I've got, I've got the motion and the second. All those in favor of it?
And Mr. Chair, before.
This is reconsidering, to reconsider the motion.
That's why I'm reconsidering.
Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're back to the motion.
The chairman, that would be our original motion.
This would be the original motion.
With Ron's findings.
Yes, yes.
And so we're back to that original motion, item A. Everybody's on board?
And you were the second?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So you're making the motion?
No, no, we're back to the original.
Original motion of the original.
If we're reconsidering, we may have to make that same motion.
I believe you can just take up the motion again.
Take it up, okay, so.
Because you did a motion to reconsider, it was unanimous, so you're going back to reconsider that decision.
The original one.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then I believe that had one condition on it as well, that would apply to lot four. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You had the one condition on there.
Correct.
What was that condition again?
Uh, you're talking about SV twenty-one O one?
Yep.
So move to approve SV twenty-one O one with one condition, based upon the following findings that I presented earlier.
Yep.
And what was that condi- the findings were that? They fire sprinkler?
I believe the findings.
Only applied to lot four.
Commissioner Haddock and Mr. Our Commissioner Ross Connect is correct, it would, the condition is that it applies only to lot four, but that there are property rights and that um, uh, there were some other ones that they're losing their ability to.
You want me to read that?
Yes, if you want.
Okay, the special condition involves an intangible hardship in the form of property rights, more so than a physical hardship in this particular case. The hardship involves the owner's property rights are lost there. It's my opinion that the applicants or owners of lot four are simply victims of a land developer that never fulfilled, fulfilled their obligations to provide adequate water storage for Mountain Meadows subdivision. In my opinion, by not approving the variance, owners are not allowed to fully maximize their recently purchased residential lot. But I assume that they purchased in good faith, thinking that they could get a building permit easily without addressing sprinkler systems or additional storage. Yes, cannot maximize the use of their three point three acre lot. Three point oh three acre residential lot is originally planned, thus impeding their property rights. Ordinances are needed to protect the property rights of Pennington County taxpayers. By granting this variance, I suggest property rights have been addressed and substantial justice has been executed.
Okay, understand?
I don't know if I agree with all that, but um I'd like to move forward on the storage unit not having to be done. So that's my bottom line, because all the, all that I don't think has been infringed on. So that's my point.
That was my, I was the second around that.
Yes.
So.
Any further discussion?
Yes, can you drop some of that stuff in there?
Well, he's doing the.
Bottom line is, we're moving forward, okay?
This is, this is back on the building permit.
Okay, so substitute motion is to approve as well, but just based on the storage and they don't need the storage at this point because they're willing to put in sprinkler systems on this, on the next item. Because of Rushmore, or what is that, Black Hills, what was the water company? Black Hills. Southern Water said that if they sprinkled, that they didn't have to have the storage capacity, which was their responsibility in the first place.
Right.
So that would be my substitute motion to approve.
There's, I'm sorry, I totally missed that. I heard a motion, but I didn't hear what the whole motion was.
Ron had a motion on, I don't know, a bunch of stuff, but the bottom line for my motion or the substitute is, we're basing this on um that the applicants have wanted or will put in sprinkler systems on the second variance and that they didn't need the thirty thousand. That was uh the Southern Hills.
Uh, just one second. I, I think we're getting too deep into this. Uh, that is part of the, that'd be part of the second one, not a part of the first one.
So I think what Deb wants clarification on is if you guys approve this first one for the building permit, then when the Schmitz go to Cory to get the building permit, he'll give them the building permit with the condition that they have to do the sprinkler system, correct?
There you go. He said it. Without all that other stuff.
M- Mr. Chair, if I may address Commissioner Haddock's uh issues, I believe uh what's in your substitute motion is what Ron addressed, um, because it's because of the developer. Uh, the developer is the reason why, uh, if I'm.
That's right.
If I'm correct. So I think it's already addressed in Ron's motion, and then it conforms with the legal requirements that we have to do before. So uh if, if I may be so forward, I think uh that the substitute motion should be dropped and the first motion should be moved upon.
I'll, I'll, good idea.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second.
So we're going with the original, original motion.
Original.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're on twenty-one dash O two.
And I'd move to, to uh follow staff's recommendations to deny. That's with the fire sprinkler, to the wave it. That's what you guys are agreeing for.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on twenty-one dash O two to deny. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, guys.
Item C. Jason.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item C is variance twenty-one dash zero two to reduce the section line setback from fifty-eight feet to forty-eight feet to bring an existing shop and pole barn into cons- into compliance. The applicant and landowners are Thomas and Marie Barrett. The location of the property is two-three-two-nine-seven-one-fifty-fourth Avenue. The size of the property is three hundred and sixty acres, currently zoned general agricultural district. Staff recommends denial as there are no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance section two O four. If the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends one condition be included. Uh, when considering uh variances, staff uses a two-pronged approach to base their recommendation. Uh, prong one is on the screen, along with staff's responses. Uh, this one determines whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest, and it considers the entire public, not just the neighbors. Starting with number one, the request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, agriculture structures are typical throughout this area and are permitted, and are a permitted use with an approved building permit. The requested use appears to conform to the neighborhood. Number three, the zoning ordinance requires a fifty-eight foot setback from the section line right of way. And number four, uh, doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan. Uh, staff found it was not applicable in this situation. And number five, doesn't harm public safety, health, or general welfare in the community. Staff found no placement of this, of the pole barn within the required setback does not appear to harm the public or community. Uh, prong two, this one determines whether special condens- conditions exist to grant a variance. It considers physical conditions, not money or economic hardship. Uh, starting with number one, staff found that no topography is sloping, per- sloping open prairie consisting of three hundred and sixty acres. Therefore, no, no physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this request. As the property sits.
Sorry, Jason.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, as the property sits today, there are five pole barns on that property, one of which is uh concerning this variance today. There's also a detached garage and three double-wide mobile homes and two onsite waste water treatment systems. Uh, there is a conditional use permit on there as well for one of those double-wide mobile homes. Access is off one fifty-fourth Avenue. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. The request was sent out for inner departmental review. Uh, we did receive a few comments back on that. Uh, first being from emergency services stating that it appears only one of three addresses issued on this parcel are posted where the driveway intersects one fifty-fourth Avenue. And staff will work with the applicant to address that, so it's not included as a condition of approval. The highway department also had a response to this stating that uh the highway department is generally opposed to reducing setbacks. In this instance, the highway department would not be opposed to this request as long as there is no reduction of the section line right of way. It should be noted, however, that if the section line was ever developed and right of way needed to be expanded to a hundred feet, the structure would be encroaching in that, or encroaching with a reduction to forty-eight feet. And lastly, we had ordinance enforcement that responded stating that this property currently has a violation, which is a building too close to a section line. This variance, if approved, will clear that violation on the property. And again, staff's recommending denial as there are no, no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance section two O four. And on the screen, this is a picture of the pole barn, uh, as well as the fence line indicating the section line.
Oh, Chairman.
Mr. Haddock.
I move approval because I think it does conform to the neighborhood. It does not harm the public safety, health, welfare in the community. And I believe the special condition, this is a ag business, and I believe um based on the ag business that this should move forward because it is has that ordinance spirit while doing sub- substantial justice for the applicant.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Does the applicant wish to address this?
He just got moved to approve, sir.
Good morning. I'm Tom Barrett. Um, we did, uh, I agree that that building is not where it should be. It wasn't intentional. We didn't do it on purpose. We did measure from the section line to one corner of the building, but we didn't measure both corners, and so I, I do apologize. It wasn't intentional that we did that. We uh, and uh, so that's why we're here. I, I do appreciate what you can do for us. It would be a considerable project to, to take care of this and move it, you know, but um my neighbor is here that owns a property right on the other side of the fan. my neighbor is here that owns a property right on the other side of the fence. Steve Shell with the Jones Ranch, he, they don't have a problem with that. So, but I appreciate what you can do.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any questions to Mr. Barrett? Anybody else wishing to speak in regard to this request? Seeing none, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hadcock, second from Commissioner Roskinek to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Thank you.
Move to close.
Got a motion to close out the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
And a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Now we're at the consent calendar. Jason.
Good morning again Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Agenda item D, minor plat twenty one dash zero eight. The applicant is David Spear. The agent is fiscal land surveying and approval is recommended. Agenda item E is minor plat twenty one dash zero nine for Cory Brown. His agent is also fiscal land surveying and approval is also recommended for this item.
Any members of the public wish to remove either of the items from the consent calendar? Any Commissioner wishing to remove? Not to take a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second from Commissioner LaCroy and second by Commissioner Lassiter to approve the consent calendar. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item F.
Cody Sack, Planning Department. Item F is the second reading of Plan Unit Development Overlay PU twenty one dash zero three. It's to rezone forty acres from general agriculture district to Plan Unit Development Overlay District to allow a seasonal event menu and specialty resort. The Board of Commissioners approved the first reading of this Plan Unit Development Overlay on Tuesday, March second, twenty twenty one, and staff is recommending approval of Plan Unit Development Overlay PU twenty one dash zero three with twenty nine conditions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by LaCroy and Lassiter to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item G.
Good morning again Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item G is Layout Plan twenty one dash zero seven to create lot B of Guy Hayes or Guy Davis Homestead. The applicant and landowner is David Stone, surveyor is Bros Engineering. Other affected landowners are is David Homestead Reserve LLC. Site location is one nine eight five zero Wilsey Road. The proposed lot size is twenty one point twenty one acres, currently zoned general agriculture district. The proposed lot will be created from two portions of, or created from portions of two existing tax parcels. The first tax ID two seven seven twos on the left-hand side of your screen. This lot currently contains a single-family residence built in nineteen fifty five per Department of Equalization records as well as two unidentified structures not listed on DOE records or building permits on file with our office. And in addition, there are no onsite wastewater treatment systems for either of, or any, any of the three buildings here. The next tax ID is one seven eight seven four, and that is on the right-hand side of the screen. This one also contains an unidentified structure not listed on DOE records or has a building permit on file with our office. And there is also no existing onsite wastewater treatment system. And the unidentified structures as well as the onsite wastewater treatment systems are, are included as conditions of approval with this layout plan. Access is unable to be determined via the layout plan, and this is included as a condition of approval. Subject properties are located on an area of undetermined flood hazard, zone D. Request was routed to for interdepartmental review. We did receive a few comments back, the first from Department of Equalization stating that it would be very useful if the surveyor could provide information on how many acres are coming out of each parent parcel so the balances can be calculated. This is included as a condition of approval. The second response we received was from County Highway Department stating that legal access to the parcel needs to be verified to prevent this from becoming, creating an isolated parcel. Access by easement or right of way should be shown in the plat. This is included as a condition of approval. And lastly, from the County Environmental Planner stating that the property described in this proposal does not have a current onsite wastewater treatment system permit or operating permit, and also this is included as a condition of approval. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area and recommends approval of Layout Plan twenty one dash zero seven with conditions.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve. Who does have the motion from?
Lassiter.
Lassiter. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item H.
Cody Sack, Planning Department. Item H is vacation of plat VP twenty one dash zero two. It's to vacate notes on plat for lot four, block one of Mountain Meadows subdivision. I want them to marry Schmidt or the applicants. The planning commission recommended to continue vacation plat VP twenty one dash zero two to April sixth, twenty twenty one. So the Board of Commissioners meeting to allow the applicants time for their subdivision regulation variances to be heard, those two variances that were heard today. So staff is recommending to continue vacation of plat VP twenty one dash zero two to the March, or sorry, to the April sixth.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Question, Commissioner Hadcock.
So what is, what are you doing on the plat, Cody, that they would? Because they're wanting to move their building permit because my main concern was the sprinkling in the fire, fire area. So that was my issue personally, but what is, what does it entail for the plat in order for us to not be able to approve it today so they can move forward on their building permit?
Um, really, the, the planning commission didn't make a recommendation, which I guess you guys can overturn, but there are some notes on the plat that staff don't want vacated as well that had, didn't have anything to do with the variances today.
Okay.
And I don't know if that made it into the report since it was being continued.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to know that Commission, if there was something that was pretty simplified on that, that we could move them forward for their building permit, but it sounds like there's some other issues, so.
Are you sure on that, LaCroy?
The only thing I, is that I, I think they requested the continuance at the planning commission meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's.
All those in favor of the motion? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item I.
Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item I is comprehensive plan amendment twenty dash zero four to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from low-density residential, rural residential district and open space district to ranchette residential district. The applicant is David Grover. The surveyor and engineer is Britton Engineering. The site location is south of Hill City along Old Hill City Road. Approximate size of both properties is two point five nine acres and they are vacant. They're currently zoned general agriculture. Staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment twenty dash zero four. Staff did evaluate current zoning within one half mile and found general agriculture district, limited agriculture, and low-density residential districts. Future land within one half mile is open space, ranchette residential, and rural residential. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review and no concerns were noted. The request is in harmony with current, or with future land use designations and comprehensive plan amendment twenty dash zero four. The applicant has also requested rezone twenty dash zero six, which we heard is the next agenda item, to allow the planning process to continue under preliminary plat twenty dash thirty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any comments, questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Agenda item J is rezone twenty dash zero six to rezone sixty nine point eight four acres from general agriculture district to ranchette residential district in accordance with section two oh five. The applicant again is David Grover. Their surveyor, his surveyor is Britton Engineering. Existing land is vacant. Current zoning is general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of rezone twenty dash zero six. Criteria reviewed was current zoning districts within one half mile and staff found that there is general agriculture, limited agriculture, as well as low-density residential. And again, future land use within one half mile is open space, ranchette residential, and rural residential. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review and again, no concerns were noted. The request is in harmony with future land use designations and the comprehensive plan. This applicant, the applicant has requested rezone twenty dash zero six in order to allow planning process to continue under preliminary plat twenty dash thirty six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor or all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item K.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Chutima Sabun, Planning Department. Agenda item K is the request to waive and refund the penalty fee associated with building permits COBP twenty one zero zero eight six in the amount of one hundred and thirteen dollar. The applicant is Jennifer Burgers, and she is here in the audience.
Any, any questions of Jennifer Berger of the Commission? Jennifer, is there anything you'd like to say in regard to this request?
Just to let you know that I purchased this cabin in two thousand and nineteen and I purchased the cabin in its current condition with all of the finished square footage as part of applying for a vacation home rental permit. It was brought to my attention that some areas of the cabin had been finished without a building permit. So I have submitted the building permit now and I'm just asking that the penalty be waived so that I'm not penalized for a previous person's actions.
That'd be my motion.
I've got a motion by Hadcock, second by Lassiter.
To prove, to prove the hundred and thirteen refund.
To, approve the refund.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I got a question, applicant. Are you in the business of vacation home rentals and purchasing property?
This is my first vacation home rental.
Okay. I was just curious because what makes me question that is when you look at the, the Board of Equalizations tax reports, it tells you what's available. And I think I didn't go through here, but if, if you were saying it's a two-bedroom, one bath, and she actually bought a three-bedroom, one bath, you had to get an appraisal and so things were changed around and you had, and the building permits. Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Got a motion and a second. Further, further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Next item has been, we've been asked to withdraw the Joseph Wright request. I think I need a motion in order to do that since we adopted it as part of our agenda.
Move to withdraw.
I've got a motion and a second from LaCroy and Hadcock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item M.
Cody Sack, Planning Department. Item M is the annual stormwater MS four report. Every year, the Pennington County is required to submit an annual stormwater MS four permit to the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. During twenty twenty, section five oh seven of the Pennington County Plan Zoning Ordinance was updated, and staff will be updating the stormwater management plan on the website in twenty twenty one to match those changes. There were twenty four stormwater permits issued in twenty twenty, and there was only one known illicit discharge in the MS four, which came from a project with inside Rapid City's city limits, and staff is recommending approval of the twenty twenty annual stormwater MS four report.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Lassiter. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Thank you. Items from the Chair and Commission members. Anything other than your committee reports? Now we'll go to the committee reports. We'll go to Commissioner Lassiter first.
All right, for the Rapid City Public Library Board of Trustees, a couple of things to update there. They're moving their policy for masks to strongly recommend once the numbers for Pennington County are active cases of two hundred or less. It looks like we're at that point over the last week, so I expect now when you go there, you'll be able to remove your mask if you wanted to have it to go in. However, if you're going to have interaction with staff and things of that nature, there's still going to be areas where you'll have to have a mask for that. They also did, let's see here, I'm just looking at all my notes. They added another area for suspension, suspended accounts. Right now, if you get suspended, you get suspended at one month and six months. They added another one in between at three-month suspension as well. And that's probably the biggest points of the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroy.
I attended the planning commission. We just went through that, so.
We helped you out a little.
I kind of liked that one. So the air quality board was Zoom again, and I tell you, they're hard to follow by. They had, two of the biggest concerns was, we had two main concerns. One was from the Pearly Pit in January and one from Homestead Street, but you know, that was one of those high winds that we had up for as far as air quality. So that's, was one of the main reasons for that. That's really all there is to report from that. For H Extension Advisory Board, we had a meeting last night and they kind of went over their budget a little bit, and they're within budget and doing good as they always do. Some of the things to report would be some of the work that I need to help them with. But one is they requested the board ask that I check with Dustin on like a sponsoring ship for the certification for CPR for Jen and, and. Two other gals in the, in the four H that do CPR and they need to have a sponsorship to do, keep their training up and so basically they want to be able to train. They have to do two trainings within the period to keep their certification.
So did they train on you on CPR, Lloyd?
That's why we're on Zoom.
They are girls.
Yeah, so that, that was one request and I'm going to try and get with Dustin afterwards to see if we can work something out. I tried telling him to cut the middleman out. They need to talk to him directly because they're talking recertification and trying to communicate it's better to just bring those two together to clarify that. The other thing they had, and I didn't, I forgot my notes at home, was had to do with mental, help me out Holly, I, I think they talked to you a little bit about this. It's about their credit card use. At some point, they use their credit card to do mental health valves or something along those lines. And so they, they use their, their credit card, they have to use their budget to pay the credit card, but then the grant comes back to pay them back. They get grant money for the mental health work that they're doing, they're supposed to.
Yes, their, their question basically was if, where does the money go back to? Does it go back into their programming line item? And it does not. It would just go back into the general fund since they're supported with, with general fund dollars.
Exactly. And I, and I, thanks for, for that clarification because that's exactly what it is. But with four H, their, their board, I think it was four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars.
It's next to nothing, yes.
Well.
For their small budget, it probably was, but it's, my recommendation to them was it's not worth a supplement to put it back into that line item.
I think when you talk supplements of the regular budgets, the board's concerned is that's like the stove to them.
Right.
I think they do very well with their, their money and their funding, so.
Yeah.
The board requested that I bring up that somehow can we get from not always going back into general fund, but back into their budget? I don't know. I'm just bringing it up to start the conversation so we can talk some more and I can communicate the next meeting what, what some people are talking about, but, but you're right. I, I know what you're saying about a supplement, like the supplements we do for the Sheriff's Department that, you know, you're talking thirty seven thousand dollars or something. This is a lot smaller than it.
Right, but per county. Right, but per county policy and statute and, you know, accounting principles, it, it has to, the revenue has to go into the general fund.
Yeah, yeah.
But we can talk about where it goes from there later.
Yeah, we can. Just wanted to bring that up. Um, the other meetings I attended was the youth council, they actually did, had a pretty long meeting, they got a new, they got a new chairman, and she's doing really good. Um, but, and they're getting, one of the things I wanted to break up, uh, somebody gave a presentation on the Abbey Feed place being turned, if there's a youth group that are doing some art, that they want to do some great art, uh, music, art, things for young people to go, mental health stuff, I forget the name of it, but there's some, some strong things that, you remember Deb, when we were talking way back, you know, years ago, the teens wanted a place to go, and well, there's somebody who's working on that, and it goes around arts and music and, uh, coffee shop and mental health, but it's, it's youth driven, so, um, once I get more information on it, I can pass it on once I get there.
They had some article on TV about some of that, and it was pretty awesome, and I can't remember the name either.
I, I want to say the garage, but it's not the garage, it's.
Used to be the garage.
Yeah, it's something along those lines, but it's something that's moving along real good. Um, other meeting I had is I had about a six or seven hour workshop with the Human Relations Commission with this, the new H R C M O A started, uh, on Saturday. Um, it just kind of in its infancy and, and combining the two groups, so, uh, it was more of a, a vision quest, I'd say, is what the meeting was, so.
That it?
That is it.
Okay, for me, a report on the Central States Fair, I'm passing a picture around, Ron's got it right now. Uh, I don't know if any of you have ever seen it, when it's been set up in the, in the rodeo arena area for banquets and so forth. Uh, they do quite a job when they put in that, uh, floor and can set it up. I think that one theirs was set up for five hundred and thirty five, um, people.
This board, Gary approved that floor back in the day because they could use that extra room because of all that dirt. That's pretty amazing.
They're just going to add to that floor now, the floor they have now covers about a one third of it, and so they're going to add to that. But anyway, Dean Johnson was elected as the new President of the Central States Fair, Tyler Trevillion is the vice, and then Casey Gerlock is the treasurer, and Jerry Cope is the secretary, I believe, you want to pass that down, pass it down here to Lloyd.
Pretty awesome looking.
Yeah. The, uh, all the, the books haven't been completely reconciled from the Black Hills Stock Show yet, probably being completed later this month, but it's still looking extremely positive from that aspect. It was a great turnout, and financially, it looks like it was very much a success. Ron.
Uh, Building Committee, I'll just do some highlights here. Uh, April first is the target date for the SST machine to be operational, that's, uh, automated tax collection machine upstairs for the, uh, treasurer's office, and I guess it's going to have some bells and whistles that another one didn't have. Uh, probably the, one of the items that will be coming down the pipeline that we have discussed before is our last meeting, we saw some photos of the underground tunnel located on the west perimeter of the courthouse, it's caving in and buckling. Uh, we're working with a structural engineer from Albertson Engineering to see what the scope of that repair is going to be. Uh, that, uh, that concrete tunnel, it used to be a, a passageway for the steam pipes for the courthouse, and it dates back, it's over a hundred years old, so, I'll keep you posted on that one. We're, uh, obviously, we're going to be moving forward with the Crisis Stabilization Center. Uh, relative to that, when I set the care campus addiction treatment services advisory board, Sheriff Thome spoke regarding the new short term mental health stabilization center facility that has passed the Senate, and, uh, that will be reality, costs about four point six million. And the facility, when complete, is estimated to be thirteen to fourteen thousand square feet, it'll house twenty four beds total, uh, which includes eight beds from the crisis care facility that is currently located inside the care campus. Uh, when that comes to fruition, we're going to need some additional parking, and so we're leaning towards demoing the lamplighter motel property and turn that into an asphalt paid parking lot. The only cost estimate I've got on that right now is around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to, uh, demo the building, side excavate, uh, do the landscaping, uh, city code. So we'll know more about that, uh, as we start, uh, construction on the Crisis Stabilization Center.
Thank you, Ron. Deb.
I also attended the Building Committee. Buildings and Grounds is hiring, uh, administrative assistant, one will start the twenty second. Um, they are still ga- gathering, uh, future space needs for each department. Um, they also, the huge thing, um, I believe is the building, the courthouse is in good shape in a lot of areas except the infrastructure, which we already know, the tunnels and the cast iron pipe for the, uh, infrastructure, um, is a, is a huge deal. Anything breaks there, we already know the cost will be, um, a lot. Um, Ron spoke about the care camp or the crisis stabilization unit, good information on that. Um, probably about one point six on that parking lot to demo plus turn it into a parking lot. Um, that'd be money, um, in one sense well used, but the other might be well needed somewhere else, like in the infrastructure and the other areas. At that point, I guess the Building Committee would have to do a, uh, basically a plan, what, what is first, what is second, what is third, based on their cash flow. Um, Fire Service Board, they are looking at the budget, um, looking at a bunch of areas that they have done a lot of training in with their mid winter, mid, mid winter muster. Um, again, that's on their own time. So there's tons of training that is going on, and those volunteer fire service departments, um, are putting that on, um, on their own time. So I think that's pretty amazing how much time they put in for the fire service and the volunteer, uh, service boards. Also, um, the radios are moving forward. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's a long plan, how about that? Uh, the radio plan is, uh, to try to switch them over, uh, through the state. Let's see, what else did we talk about? Um, there's a couple other items, for some reason, I wrote them down, and of course, I have a lot of those. Um, Fire Service also reported that it was one of the driest winters that they've had in a long time, and we know that from the last couple of years of, uh, the fires that we've been having around the different areas in Pennington County. We do need some moisture, and thank you, Jesus, we did get that snow. I also am working with Ms. Holly, thank you, Ms. Holly, she's a Godsend, for looking up for information and helping me with, um, some of the, um, safety and justice grants that people had questions on. We had a meeting at the Alex Johnson, um, on the safety and justice grants with Sheriff Thome, Police Chief, and, um, some others with the downtown and the hotel owners that had questions. We also had some information passed around on panhandling. Um, Pennington County, we are helping with some of those issues, maybe the campaign, we might have some grant money that I'm told to help with campaign on panhandling, mostly about, um, positive change, not spare change, and what that difference makes, um, when people are panhandling, um, for their addictions and other areas that we can help, and we do have help for in different areas where people are actually hindering businesses from being able to, um, do business with some of the panhandlers. I did look up, also, um, Sioux Falls has an ordinance that's not illegal to panhandle, it's illegal to solicit panhandling on people's businesses and different areas where they put what's illegal, what's not, and what is legal, because it's not, um, it's a constitutional right to be able to panhandle in one sense, but it's how you're doing it, if you're aggressive when you're doing it, those kinds of things, that's illegal. So, um, I think it's going to be a good meeting, we'll have a meeting with the downtown, Holly and I at first. Uh, City Council was there, Strowman, he cannot make this one, but he's willing to move forward with us. Um, and maybe we could use this in the other cities and move forward with, uh, Wall, Hill City, Keystone, those areas. So, um, Rapid City is wanting us to work with them, uh, maybe put a foot forward of how we can help with some of their grants, otherwise, they won't be able to move this forward till twenty two, and I think right now, it's, it's something well needed for Rapid City and to move us forward in the business industry, let alone, um, just, just to get the word out, um, we do have a care campus for a reason, and that reason is to help those people instead of giving them money, um, to feed some of their addictions. Not all of the people do that, but a lot of them do, and, and we'd like to make that difference for Pennington County because we do run those jails.
Commissioner LaCroy, do you want to cover the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners?
Geez, I did forget something, didn't I?
At your age, even.
I'm glad you remembered that. Uh, we had that, what, last Friday, the Black.
I didn't actually remember, it's on our sheet right here.
No, it's not. No, we had a Black Hills Area, uh, Commission and Officers, or County Officials, meeting last week, and it was, uh, we had it in person, no Zoom, and we, how many, we have, Holly, thirty?
Thirty, thirty three?
Yes.
Well, yeah, a little more, probably close to forty.
We had a, a very good turnout. Um, congratulations to Holly, she, uh, was reelected.
Who's the new chair, Lloyd?
Ted Seaman.
Ted Seaman, yeah. Ted Seaman and Randy, I always mess with her, DiBerg, got vice chair. Um, Deb.
Kathy Glenns.
Kathy Glenns got treasurer, got back to treasurer and your secretary. So this is, this is your second or third? I was thinking third when I was going through, but this is your second year. Okay, so, um, very well attended, and Ted did a good job, and Randy's good, uh, recognized Holly for outstanding work that she does out there.
So how long were you the chair? Weren't you the chair of that?
Two years.
Yeah, two years.
There you go.
She's her, this is her third year too.
This will be your third year.
Yeah, that's why I was gonna.
You guys got short memories.
That's why I said that, Holly, because if Lloyd's been in there too, you've been with her, with, with him for two years, and then this would be your third.
Yeah, because we came into, just as the, our new election would have happened right about the same time as COVID was hitting, and it was better that we kept, stayed on because we had the facilities to, to run the meetings, and so, um, it, it was very good. I mean, there's some plans, I think, uh, Gary's got some stuff that we're going to talk about, we had some money that was left over from funds, that I think they may have a good idea for the convention type thing, that the convention's going to be here this year, so that should be well attended too, I think. So, um, congratulations to the existing and the new, uh, elected officials for the Black Hills Area County Commissioners.
Thank you, Lloyd. Next item is approval of vouchers, and I, I got Commissioner Hadcock abstaining from this first one, we've got a voucher in the amount of a hundred and ninety dollars to the Rose Inn.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Laster, second by Commissioner LaCroy, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next one is to move, approve the remaining vouchers totaling one million, six hundred ninety one thousand, three hundred and eighty six dollars and forty five cents.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is items from the public. Come on forward.
Are you public, Janelle?
I'm going to be the public today. Um, Janelle, think with Fisk Land Surveying, I'm going to take this off for just a second, sorry. Um, I was sitting, listening to the discussion on Rushmore Ranch Estates that you had, that you spent such a lengthy time talking about, and one of my pet peeves over the years, and some of you have sat on Planning Commission or sat in, may have heard me say, plats are not bulletin boards, and they shouldn't be used that way. We shouldn't be putting notes and things that belong in a separate agreement that have the ability to define the parties, whether it's the county and an individual landowner, the county and the developer of a subdivision. When you put these items on a plat, you lack the ability to provide terms, conditions, understanding of what's to take place. Um, when they talked about queuing in this additional thirty thousand gallon tank, they were talking about the developer doing this, not leaving a time bomb for some sixty fifth unfortunate landowner down the road who doesn't have the means to install that. And so these agreements, and, and when we place notes on plats, whether there's things, even like flood planes that are subject to change, whether there's setback requirements, whether there are access easements that we don't know who the parties are, who, how many people are entitled to use it, who's responsible for maintaining it, any of those things that go on a plat document lack the ability for the specificity needed to make a good agreement. A plat provides the means to transfer property, to create lots, and provide a graphic description of a deed. It's not there for you to place notes on that might be outdated twenty years down the road or forty years down the road. And I guess my comment today is just, I would hope that we could maybe consider some different options going forward and be more thoughtful when those things come up and somebody says, let's put a note on the plat because it'll be there forever. Sometimes that isn't necessarily what you want, or that doesn't serve the county the best, or the public the best, so.
So, Janelle, a question for you, and maybe Cullen can, can get in on this too. I mean, we've got all these old plats now with notes on them. What can we do with those to, I mean, is there something official that we can do to remove the notes and separate it at this point in time?
There's a process whereby you can vacate either notes or easements on plat documents. Usually, it takes an applicant to, to vacate a specific note, whether, you know, and I don't know that the county couldn't be an applicant to vacate a note on a plat document, or somebody within a subdivision.
But Janelle, just, just one question. So, the note there is for reasoning as well, so if, I understood the thirty thousand not at first, because I got kind of confused when Ron was saying, well, I talked to Tim and I talked about the, about, after the fact. So what happens is with the, with the, um, amount of water, or how much water, I just figured it was storage. I didn't know they were providing at the time thirty thousand gallons for the whole development. It does say it on their bottom line that they need thirty thousand in order to serve those seven months. If I, if I was looking at that, I would say that that note's going, as a person that's going to buy something, that it might not have that water, or it might be sprinkling, I would rather have those notes on there, not to put in, no offense, the thirty thousand, but have some inkling that I should be checking on the water storage and stuff.
So, my opinion is that you don't want to remove those notes from the context of plating, but they should be separate agreements, separate documents that appear in your chain of titles, so that when you do a title commitment, if you've ever signed documents when you're closing on a house, everybody's just going like this. And if you've ever seen a copy of the plat document, plat documents are fifteen by twenty six, some of them are multiple pages, they get reduced to eight and a half by eleven, you can't see or read anything on the plat document anyway that appears in the title commitment. You stand a better chance if it's a separate agreement, like an easement, that, you know, and agreed, people have the responsibility to pay attention to that, but we should make it as easy and as clear as possible for them. Right.
I appreciate your input. Cullen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, I believe there was a process, uh, going back twenty years, and I think it stopped, where they phase in developments and they, to meet the subdivision requirements for these larger, uh, developments, um, that, and we've seen it.
Tuesdays.
Through the Planning Commission and then this board, where you meet that magic number, and oh, you got to meet the subdivision regulations right now. Uh, I can tell you that the Planning Department has gotten away from that, uh, and because it creates some issues, like we saw today, where it becomes cumbersome to try and have a meeting in an orderly fashion to try and figure out what's going on because the developer goes bankrupt. So I can tell you that the Planning Department no longer does the phase ins like that, is my understanding. So, going forward, we shouldn't have those issues, you know, ten years down the line. So going forward, we shouldn't have those issues, you know, 10 years down the line, when hopefully you guys are still here, but you won't, you won't have to deal with these issues, hopefully. So as a perspective thing, just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
So you know, it said anything over 65 building permits, but it didn't mention what happens at 40 of those homes, somebody bought and tore them down. Now you've got your 65 building permits and you've got 25 effective homes. So I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Other public comments?
Hello, I'm Zeb Hoffman. I live in Pedro, which is north of Wall. Many of you probably don't know where that is, but I have a question for you. We are having some problems with our county road that it's a little rough, it's kind of been rough. I understand it's a little bit dry this year and they couldn't blade it to the amount what it was desirable. What I am here for is I'd like to know the chain of command, who I need to talk to when we have adequate moisture? And if there's a problem with the road, who do I need to talk to? We have the head guy down there in Wall, and then we have a head guy up here. I was wondering how much control does the guy in Wall have? Can he go blade roads without talking to the guy in Rapid, the head of?
Well, let's just ask Joe Miller that question. Joe? Joe is the head guy.
Morning, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Absolutely. Mitch has the full authority to go blade roads when he sees fit. You know, we, this last moisture, not this one Monday, Tuesday, but the one prior to that, as everybody knows, you guys got the load limit, that we put load limits on last Thursday, or it might have been Thursday before, excuse me. With that, there's moisture coming out of the ground on your gravel roads from the bottom. And with this chance of moisture coming this week, we informed all of our foremen in New Underwood, Rapid City, Hill City, and in Wall that this might not be the best time to blade our roads. With that frost coming out, it puts those gravel roads in a fragile state. You blade that top off, now you've broken that seal, for lack of a better term, and the clay in our gravel down there. In Wall, it's a prairie gravel, so there's quite a bit of clay in it. I don't remember exactly the PI content of the gravel on Creighton or Pedro, but it's very high in clay content. So once you open that up, and if we get moisture from the top and the bottom, now it's like a sponge and we have a muddy mess. So, long story short, yes, Mitch does have full authority to go blade roads whenever he sees fit.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
So District One is my district, and that's pretty much Rapid City to the Wyoming border. So we got a lot of gravel roads and we've got the same problems that you do, the dust and the washboards. And then in the winter, you got the snow. And so I started getting a lot of complaints coming directly to me. And so what I tried to do is go back to them and say, reach out to Josh, who is our foreman in Hill City, and express your concern to Josh and work it out with Josh. If you don't feel you're getting adequate results, then reach out to Joe. And then if you don't feel that you're still getting, or less than result, you know, less than what you expect, then you would want to go to your county commissioner, and that would be Travis, I think. So that's kind of the chain of command there. And so if you don't feel the guy in Wall's doing adequate, I'm sure Joel will work with you one-on-one.
I have spoke with Joe and Mitch on numerous occasions, I would say. I talked to Travis last week, I'd say maybe two weeks ago. I guess the big reason is, I'm kind of getting a little bit of a runaround here. I'll call Mitch, and Mitch is like, well, we got to talk to Joe. And then, not that Joe's really giving me a runaround, so then I called Travis, you know, and say, hey, our road is, in there for a while, our road was just about undrivable. And it was, it was dry, and I'm not, there was potholes, and I'm not going to say it wasn't dry. But according to the weather service, it was a normal year in Pennington County. So if our road is that beat up on a normal year, what's it going to be like in a dry year? And I, I just feel that our road, where I live, that we have a culvert washed out, it's a half mile from my house. In May, I think it's May 15th, it'll be two years. If that culvert gets to wash out, there is five families below me that will be trapped. They, there is no way out if there is any moisture. And I understand that there's process and everything, and I think it's whatever ship, not ship, but FEMA. FEMA, thank you. FEMA is involved. Okay, what happens if it washes out and we're still waiting on FEMA?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to touch base on this, because we talked about this particular issue. And I think when we got off the phone, I said I was going to get back to you, and I had asked Joe some information about all that. And in fact, I had been out there the week prior to driving around with Joe and Mark to kind of take a look at the roads so I could have an idea of them. And then, of course, you called me the week after. And I did talk to you about that particular culvert being washed out and we're waiting for the funds from FEMA. What I didn't get back to you is, and I think Joe just stood up here to tell us the answer to that question.
Right, so, you know, I guess, Zeb, I would ask the question, what happened when the road washed out up there, you know, just south of you?
Well, you fixed it, but we've had a problem for two years there. Everybody is aware of the problem. The road washed out south of me is actually west of me. And the one that is washing out is east of me, not even a quarter mile. The one that washed out west of me would be a mile and a half. You did fix it. But we have this problem, and it's been there for two years. The road is half washed out. They put up reflectors and a barbed wire fence, and they say, one lane road, and you come over the hill and you do not see the sign until you're over the hill. So if you were to meet somebody, you would have no idea if you are not familiar with the road until you're over there and you're already committed.
Joe, what is, do you have maybe a solution?
So I guess bottom line is, you know, my point with the road washing out to the west of you there is, we had it fixed within a week of it washing out. I believe we had that emergency bypass in there. The reason we haven't fixed this particular one is, we're waiting on SHIP-OM, which is State Historical Preservation Office, I believe is what the O stands for. Just waiting for their concurrence that, hey, we can go get dirt and fill it in and get the culvert fixed. All that takes process. With FEMA, in order to make sure we do get those funds, I wish Dustin Wilk was here, he'd be able to explain it a lot better, but we have to follow a certain process with FEMA. And until we meet that process, we can't. If there's a problem, an emergency, that the road is impassable, we can go get it fixed. But right now, it's a one-lane road, much like a one-lane bridge. And I guess I don't recall any sort of hill there at all. It's pretty flat. It's good sight distance from either direction. So it is a safe travel way. We signed it accordingly. So that's, you know, once we get the clearance from the SHIP-OM office and all the proper clearances, we can go get it fixed.
Flat, it's river breaks.
It's got good sight.
If Cheyenne River breaks, how can it be flat on a Cheyenne River break?
It has very good sight distance from either direction, is what I'm trying to say.
I lived there.
Well, sir, we have, we had some issues in Wall behind there, where the ranchers and, we're saying their road was really bad, and it was. So we went out and we looked at it, and we found that the moisture content is the issue. Well, then it rained and they said, well, you can fix it now. Well, that's not how it works. You already know that, you're a rancher, that water just doesn't come right up and it's all good. So we did take care of the issue, but it took a little bit to get it done. His department does not ignore you, and we apologize if that's not happening the way you want or fast enough. But there is rules and regulations. Number two, when that road is blatable, they will blade it. They are known, our county's known for that. But I've talked to a lot of the ranchers and the farmers out there, and they said, yeah, you're right, Ben, our moisture content is pretty low. And even we're having some issues. So we totally understand, once they understood that they weren't getting the runaround, that it was the facts of, there isn't that much moisture that's happening. Even though you can see a little bit of rain, it doesn't, doesn't do that second layer any good, is what he's saying. And we are known for that, sir, and I'm pretty sure at this point, and even before that, call Joe, because he'll tell you the facts. You might not always like those truths, and it's not fast enough, but hopefully in the next, by the summer or even before then, he can work with you and figure out how to get it done.
But we are agreeing that there is low moisture. So if there's low moisture, there should be hardly any frost, if any. So we are talking that with the last deal, that was frost. Well, there was zero frost. I, and I, I've been digging pulse holes, I know how much frost there is.
Yes, sir.
There's zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Counselor.
So it's interesting you mentioned that. I actually have a dirt driveway that I have to maintain, it's about a half a mile long, and then I go out to the county road, which is a dirt road. However, whenever I was maintaining my road, the Friday that you called me, because you called and you were talking about frost, and I was like, well, I'm not blading my road, I guess I'll figure out how deep the frost is. Interestingly enough, I did hit frost on my driveway. I didn't go out to the county road to hit it, but I hit it on my particular driveway, which is about a half a mile. And I was like, it's interesting, because we were about to start tilling as well, and I thought, well, if there's this frost just underneath the road here, there's probably frost underneath the big roads, and then I probably shouldn't go out and till. Went out there and dug a hole, and there was still frost on the ground. So I can tell you, at least out to New Underwood, I was getting frost on the day that I talked to you later in that afternoon, probably about 2:00 in the afternoon. I actually had to pull a tractor to pull a piece of metal that was frozen to the ground as well, off of the ground, because we were resetting a small cross bridge that we have some metal on, all in that particular day. So I know you don't see it, but sometimes the way that frost is under the ground sets differently depending on where you're at, and depending on what's underneath that particular dirt or what's in that area.
Joe, maybe you could give this, get his name and number and give him updates on your SHIP-OM, updates on your roads and stuff, so he doesn't feel like he's ignoring, getting ignored or getting a runaround from us. Because we, he usually, and I'm a vouch for him, because I've had a lot of issues, or people have called me and they haven't been in my district, just my district, and he's taking care of them for us. So maybe if he keeps you updated and in the loop, you don't feel like you're getting ignored, or he's just doing it because he doesn't have time to take care of your roads, or?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
You know, I think gravel roads, there's always the stuff that's inconvenient, and we just try to get them fixed when possible. But if there's a safety issue, like you were talking about, and you live out there, if we can't, if there's some reason we can't physically do anything with the road until the weather conditions are correct, I think we need to at least put some signage so that we don't have an accident out there.
The safety issue that he is referring to has already been properly signed. It's a, it's a one-lane road, the culvert, well, I believe you were with us when we were out there touring it. It's just north of where the road washed out completely. There's a, I think, mark two 36-inch culverts? Is there two 36-inch culverts there that washed out?
Yes, I think you need to have a box covered.
Right, and Sean, where are we at with the H&amp;H study on it? Do we know? Right, okay.
So as a landowner, I own the land on both sides. Do you guys just push through the box culvert? Because that will ruin my irrigation bottoms on the, below that, if you guys put a box covered in. I'm already having problems with erosion.
I'll say again, work with Joe and these guys to make sure that you're getting communicated.
Box covers going in.
Okay.
We can talk about it, you know, if you have other issues, but we haven't decided on a box culvert quite yet. You know, the H&amp;H study is a hydraulic study, so it shows what capacity is needed there. Those three, the three 36-inch culverts that were there, obviously were not sufficient, that's why they washed out, so.
The reason they washed out was, you were scaring big rock down there and it never happened. And so when we had floods two years ago, it just pulled in there and it just washed under. That's what, I mean, that's what happened. I watched it.
I'll take your word for it.
Why, I lived there, I watched it.
The bottom line, guys, is you need to find some solution, one that you're in communication, and Joe's has your phone number, and Travis is your representative. We are all here if you ever want to call us besides Travis, but Travis does represent your district and he knows a lot about the hang stuff, so.
Okay, and then I got one more question. What is the policy on snow removal? How many inches does it have to be if there's ice on the road? Is there, can they go out there with blades and blade my hills so I can get out?
Back to Joe.
Fill him some love.
Okay, so, Zeb, I believe you're referring to one instance. In fact, so that, just so the commission's aware, I believe you've all got the snow policy. I know I gave it to Mr. Ross Connect here recently, I don't know about the rest of you.
I saw it.
Our snow policy is on a hard surface, which is asphalt surface, it's.
I'll get another one.
It's two inches or more. On the gravel road surface, it's four inches or more. Sometimes, especially this time of year, we tend to leave that four inches, or if it's five inches, we'll leave that on the gravel roads so we have the moisture to maintain. The instance you're referring to, I believe, was back in January?
October.
October? And we had already sent a plow truck up and did the snow removal once. I then received a phone call on a Saturday, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I received a phone call from Zeb on a Saturday asking us to go back out and scrape Mooney Hill, I believe is what you called it. I don't know exactly where that is. You know, I talked to Mitch, our foreman, we had already been there, we had done the snow removal once. You know, there had not been new snow, correct?
Correct.
So it was snowpack, and we run up, run into this in Ron Ross Connect's district quite a bit. It was a Saturday, it was off hours, we'd already been there once, we weren't going out there again. Bottom line, that's what happened.
The instance he is talking about, it was last weekend in October, it's Saturday, I had to try to get my cows out to the sale barn, I had them in the corral, and they came and blade the snow, I'm not denying that, but they left ice, and my truck could not get out. So I had all my cows in the corral, cows weaned, and I had to get them to the sale barn, and I could not get out of the hill. So I called Mitch and said, Mitch, can you please take off some ice off the Mooney Hill, which is from the pavement, where the pavement ends on Creighton Road down the hill? So I can get out with my semi to take my cows to the sale barn. He told me that we have plowed it, and I do not deny that they plowed it, but they left ice, and I could not get out with the semi. So therefore, I did call Joe, and I says, I would like this hill re-bladed so I can pull out with my semi without spinning or crashing. And he says, we have been there and that is all we're going to do. So therefore, it was, I would say, 11 o'clock in the morning, maybe noon. I cannot exactly remember the time. So the sun came out and me and my friends drove up and down the hill with our pickups to try to break the ice. And at 4:00, I finally got out. So my cows stood in my corral from pretty much 10:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, weaning when I had to get them to the barn. I did get out. I am fortunate that it was sunshiny, but if it was not sunshine, I would have not got out. And then I would have had to start the process all over again. And I was needing to wean my cows so I could get my cows home before winter. That was the problem, and this is where it's kind of started. I was needing help from the county to get my livestock out so I could get paid, to pay my taxes and everything else that goes with agricultural deal. And the only thing I was needing was some help from the county to get some ice off the road so I could get out. It wasn't like they had to go all the way down to where I live, which is 42 miles north. They had to go 17 miles north of Wall to blade a quarter of a mile. And that is what I was asking, and I got denied. And I'm not very happy about that.
I hear you, Mr. Hoffman. I appreciate you coming in and expressing your concern. And I think this is issues that will be discussed and talked about as to how it will be handled in the future.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time for everything.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you, Zeb.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Just one question, we've, I mean, nobody likes gravel roads, especially the folks that live in my district, but you got real mail carriers, right?
Yes.
Do they ever complain?
Yes.
Okay, just curious.
Yes. Where I live, like I said, it's 42 miles north, there's 17 miles of pavement, the rest is gravel. I've lived there for 38 years, my whole life. This is worse, the roads I've ever been, ever.
Thank you.
No, 2002 beat SIS by far.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to go in executive session.
So moved.
Personnel issues, they got a motion, do I have a second and a second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Need a motion to go back in regular session.
Move to go in. Move the go on the.
Motion and a second. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, motion approved. We've got two motions that need to be presented. Uh, make a motion to, uh, hire William Huggins as a seasonal temporary non-benefited flagger at A12, step eleven, fifteen dollars and eighteen cents per hour effective April five, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second from Commissioner, uh, LaCroy. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second motion, uh, to hire Barbara Sallyers as a seasonal temporary non-benefit flagger at A12, step nine, fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents per hour effective April five, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Got a, a motion and a, and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Take a motion to adjourn.
Move the adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?